All right, welcome back everyone. And so we will get started. So moving on to the next item on our agenda is oral communications. So this is an opportunity for someone to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda. And so if there's anybody that's interested in doing that, they can do it now. All right, so we'll move on then to presentations and we have a -- this is for --
Oh, this for later.
Yeah, so we have a presentation from the St. Vincent de Paul book drive. Kristin, you want to come on up and introduce yourself and show us what you're all about?
I face towards you, right?
You can, yes.
Yes, good. First of all, thank you Honorable Mayor, and thank you Honorable Mayor Pro Tem for meeting with Brad and I last week for the Books for Hope campaign. And before I go into Books for Hope, I want to tell you a little bit about St. Vincent de Paul, so if we can go to the next slide. Founded in 1933 in San Mateo County with the initiative of helping the poor, we have provided the following care to folks in San Mateo County. We've provided help for 28,000 individuals regardless of race, religion, or personal affiliation, including 11,000 children. We've provided 3.7 million of food, rent, clothing, and other necessities to those in need. We've provided 300 meals served daily at SVDP's three homeless help centers, and we have five thrift stores that provide employment and low-cost goods. 2,500 victims of crime and incarcerated supported by SVDP, so we have incarceration program where if you are coming out of being incarcerated, we help you to get employment and help you with needs. And then we also operate an e-commerce sites on Amazon and eBay. Next slide. Now I would like to talk a little bit about Books for Hope campaign. We are reaching for the stars on this campaign and attempting to bring in 1 million books by next year. Who does book for hope's drives, schools, parishes, companies, and citywide drives? For example, back in May, we did a citywide drive campaign for Burlingame, bringing the community together to help our neighbors in need. We put banners down two busy streets, canvassed the shops with flyers, and had a truck with a sign parked there for a week and on the weekend, so they were able to donate books. And as you can see on this slide here, for every book that is donated that we are able to sell, it equates to also three meals. Now, the money that we raise through Books for Help goes to all the other things that I mentioned as well, so it doesn't just go to homeless meals, but just to equate it, so you understand how that equates, that's how it equates to one book equals three meals. All for a good cause, out of 5,000 books we received from this book drive in Burlingame, we were able to, again, three meals were provided for the homeless help centers. It's a fun community building activity and everyone can participate in which raises much-needed funds for St. Vincent de Paul. And then go to the next slide. Who is the community we serve? Families and children, individuals, homeless, formerly incarcerated. When government agencies can't do any more for them, they do send people to St. Vincent de Paul, who are one of the last remaining nonprofits that can help them when the government can't help them any longer. And also, every 45 minutes, two people go to a home visit within our county. So every 45 minutes, two people go to do a home visit within our county for St. Vincent de Paul. Go to the next one. So thank you for considering a Brisbane Books for Hope drive. We hope you like what you've learned today, and we hope that you are able to do a drive in October. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Kristin, and does any council members have questions?
No, I think it'd be a great program. We probably should coordinate it with our Friends of Brisbane Library and kind of, I think, connect and, you know, they have a lot of resources and stuff and value there. So I know Kevin Fryer's here from Friends of Brisbane Library, so that might be --
I know, I think that'd be a great idea. There's a Friends of Burlingame Library, isn't there, that you worked with?
Is there a Friends of Burlingame?
Yeah, so it was a, if we did it with the city of Burlingame, we didn't do it with the, we work with libraries, some we do and some we don't. Some have the Friends of the Library, and so some have their own sales, we collect books after the sales that don't sell. So we're trying with them in a lot of different ways. So it's, I'm not sure what Brisbane Library does, I'm not sure with them, but I don't know if you sell your books or what you guys do with them currently now, if you kind of recycle books out. We partner with libraries too, so there's a bunch of different opportunities. At the end of the day, we're trying to figure out how we can get books and monetize them to help basically our neighbors in need. So it's just another funding avenue for us, but all our books are sold online. We have about 17,000 books online right now on Amazon that are for sale that have all been donated, and it's a hundred will recyclable, so it's zero-waste initiative. So whether we sell a book, or recycle it, or it's full, nothing goes in the landfill, which is fairly important to us and how we operate, and so there's that opportunity too. So we'd love to coordinate with the library if that's, or whatever's best, but at the end of the day, we look for a highly trafficked area. We, if we have an internal advocate, which means if the council supports what we're doing through your guys' communications, then these things are hugely successful. When we don't, then they don't. We've done drives with 32 branches of Bank America, we've done drives with Google, I mean, so we're out there in the community up and down the peninsula, and we love the opportunity to connect with cities because then it's more of a community event, which is, we're more of a community-type organization because we're a people-to-people service organization. So we'll work any way that works best for the people that we're working with on the other side, because we're all trying to achieve the same goal.
Absolutely.
So we're very open to working.
Okay.
All right. Do you have questions, Lori?
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to meet with us last week. I enjoyed learning about the program, and I think that this sort of community volunteer event is something that would fit very well in our community. You know, a lot of people are very generous and giving and love to recycle and reuse, and I'm the representative on our countywide library board. We're actually meeting next Monday, and so I'd be happy to put you in touch with the staff there, and Kevin Fryer can connect you with the Friends of the Brisbane Library.
Yeah, and we can share a lot about how we've worked with other libraries as well too.
Thank you, Brad. Madison, you had a question?
Yeah, so it sounds like you guys resell the books through Amazon and eBay, right?
Yes.
Okay, so what types of books do you find bring, you know, the highest amount of return? So essentially, so like with children's books or mysteries, or are there any kind of books that are better than others in that department?
Yeah, so textbooks, particularly this last couple of months, have been very good for us.
Oh, okay.
People going back to school.
A lot of textbooks.
Yeah, so we love textbooks, and oddly enough, you know, self-help books go very well, textbooks, or educational books, that the overpopulated novels and stuff where there's so many out there don't. But I actually just was reporting this afternoon before and tonight, the number-one book, we've sold 60 of them out of donations, is the book by, it's called Girl Boss or something. If you've heard of this book, it's like, it's a book written by an entrepreneur, this woman, and all of a sudden it's like, two to one of all the other books, it'll be salt, so it's all over the place. But educational, self-help, some religious books. What books don't work for us very well are usually library books that are geared towards elementary. I don't know why, they're just not as popular out there as the other books.
What about cookbooks? Is that just kind of okay?
Not as much. So we're developing a complete list, and actually, you know, depending on what they sell through you guys' library here, you know, it's all kind of the same thing. The thing that, we also sell our books in our stores, and we also donate books, so when we go out to homes, home visits, they take books and give them to the children and the families as well, so it's pretty well-rounded.
It's groceries too, right?
What?
They hate groceries too.
Yeah, oh, groceries, we do tremendous, I mean, we're doing rents, utilities, we're serving all over things, but for the books in particular, we can get a more specific list, but that's the main category.
I was just curious for the public, you know, who's ever listening, that, because I wouldn't think of a textbook at all, but I can see why, obviously textbooks are super expensive. You're always, as a student, trying to find a cheaper way, and a lot of times, if there's already notes in there, that's actually a good thing.
Yeah, there's a whole, yeah, and some could be good and some could be bad.
Yeah, so it's okay to get a used textbook that has markups in there because it can be helpful. Do you have agreements with libraries that, I know a lot of times they're going to purge books, and they sometimes will sell them for a dollar or something, or a bag for a dollar, and probably not all of those always sell. Do you have agreements with certain libraries, hey, if there's inventory that you're purging that you can't get rid of by selling it for a dollar to the public, do you, will they give those to you, or do they, I don't know what they do with those?
No, they give, they'll give them to us and other resellers, so to speak. I mean, if, we're in the thrift business, so we know how many times people will slice a nickel, and they'll take those books, and there's a lot of different people that can do them and monetize them. So books that we can put online, we put online. Yellow books, because they're green, go into our stores or can be given away, and just red books are saying they will not sell online, so some will put on stores, some will donate to another recycler. So the thing about the book business, and the library could probably contend to this, is there's a lot of books and only few are really sellable, truly online, so there's this whole other market about who you sell to do that, and they go to other stores, they end up in all sorts of different places, but we know they don't go to the landfill, which is one of our key initiatives.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay.
All right, so, you know, it seems like the council is, I guess, in agreement of, you know, moving forward with some kind of book drive with St. Vincent de Paul. Clay, how would we go about coordinating something like that?
Well, I'd be glad to meet with you. We could do that anytime. I'll be here tomorrow or next week, and we can talk about how best to move forward.
All right, great.
Could you connect us via email?
Sure.
That would be great.
Okay, good. Yeah, well, thank, yeah, thank you for coming, and Kristin, thank you for reaching out to me. You know, it's been a pleasure, you know, just knowing you over the last couple of years and all the work that you do in the nonprofit world, and I'm glad you found a great spot at St. Vincent de Paul, and it's wonderful, that'll be all the work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. All right, next up, Paul, South San Francisco scavengers are going to give us a little presentation regarding their new residential garbage cart pilot program.
Say that 10 times fast. Say that 10 times fast.
Yeah, say it once slow.
Thank you, Marie, excuse me, thank you very much, members of the council, for giving us an opportunity to come before you here tonight. My name is Paul Fermosa, I'm the CFO of the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. Just like to introduce Teresa Montgomery. She is our sustainability manager, recycling person, and all-around good person. Really like having her on our staff again after so many years of work.
Such a love fest.
Anyway, back in 2014, we had a new agreement with the city, and that agreement included various efforts directed at keeping litter out of the stormwater and therefore out of our bay. These efforts include things like roadside litter cleanup and abandoned waste collection, increased street sweeping, et cetera. And one of the programs that we discussed at that time was to keep an eye out for improved garbage containers, and that we would adopt those receptacles as they became available, because at the time, we had, excuse me, we had a prototype of this, but the locking mechanism was, had something to be desired. It broke the first time we tried it. As it turned out, it had been 3D printed and it just wasn't really, really ready for primetime, anyway. But the idea behind these locking lids is to prevent animal intrusion.
Yeah.
All right.
I know.
Rocking me here tonight, Rocky?
Yeah, I was wondering if you were going to bring out Rocky?
Yeah, welcome back.
Trying to put them out of business, at least out of the business of invading the We now have an actual production version of this container, and we, however, based on our previous experience, we thought it would probably be better to do like a pilot program, and just try it out with certain residents, and Teresa's going to explain the pilot project, but we also have a little video from the manufacturer that's on YouTube, actually, but it's pretty interesting, shows how it works, and Maria offered to let us show it here tonight. It's only three minutes, we'll try to make it quick. I know you have a long agenda, so appreciate your indulgence.
It stars Rocky.
It stars Rocky.
Then we'll love it.
Yeah.
Good friendly.
Here we go. And then I'll turn it over to Teresa, she'll explain the pilot project.
Oh.
Oh, no. I'm out of play.
It says come back later.
The internet. What are you going to do?
What?
No, maybe not.
She's just maybe reload it and might cooperate.
Yeah.
You gotta go back out.
While they're trying to do that, I can at least point out a few things that we could, they go over in a real cute manner in the video.
Oh.
They show that raccoons.
Rarick Raccoon Institute recent findings. Meet professional researcher Harry R. Akun.
Yeah.
With four years of in-the-field experience and weighing almost 43 pounds, he's earned the title Nightcrawler. See how easily he manipulates a traditional organics cart. Simple love, no problem for Harry. Poor design, means easy to tip. Our researcher quickly makes a mess of things. The results: more work for angry homeowners. Now, let's look at our second test case, the new Rarick 120-liter 32-gallon EnviroGuard rollout cart. By challenging the status quo, Rarick engineers have developed a solution that maximizes organic waste collection efficiencies. Now, let's see what happens when Harry, the Nightcrawler, puts it to test. Rarick Pacific's new EnviroGuard Organics rollout cart achieves a new level of performance that will improve customer satisfaction and participation. At over 38 inches tall, it is a formidable foe to critters of any size. Notice our professional researchers struggling to find a solid footing to tackle the Rarick EnviroGuard. He even seeks the help of a fellow associate. Climbing is significantly more difficult on the EnviroGuard. Even with all his years of experience, Harry's not meeting with much success. Sorry, Harry.
Here it is again.
Eventually, our researcher finally finds himself on top of his world. But, Rarick Pacific's rodent-resistant handle has been specifically designed to keep out some of the most persistent pests every city faces. EnviroGuard features a unique locking system that prevents these critters from opening the carts, consuming the waste, and leaving a mess for the city and residents to clean. Each is also equipped with an internal hinged bottom assembly that pivots to prevent trapped debris during dumping. Based upon extensive research, testing, and customer feedback, Rarick Pacific Company has engineered the ideal containers for collection of organic wastes. Special thanks to Harry R. Akun for his valiant effort.
I'm so happy that loaded.
EnviroGuard Organics rollout cart. It's easy to use and rodent-proof to eliminate messy cleanups, and because it was designed to be NC compliant for both fully and semi-automated service, it can help reduce workers' comp claims.
Always a priority.
All right, there he is.
So the locking mechanism, sorry, basically, so the locking mechanism involves, and there goes the next video.
Weapon instruction.
Turning it by hand and leaving it like this, as opposed to when you're loading. Ta-da.
So whenever you're not opening the lid to put stuff in, you're leaving it in a locked position, so whether this is outbound on collection day or in your side yard, nothing is going to get into it. And then the way it works, they call it a gravity lock. If you tip this like this, it doesn't open. Ready, before you look at it, right? But if you tip it all the way, it doesn't. So residents put it out at the curb in the locked position, so our drivers do not have to get out of the truck to unlock it.
Yeah.
And then, when they're done servicing it, and they look back, it locks again, so if it's raining, you don't come back out to the park pit for the lottery, so that's kind of the problem as well.
The wind doesn't blow it up.
And, you know what, I've done a regular 32-gallon cart, so I came on our less-than-even roadways, this is going to be good for that too. So what we want to do is, at the end of this month, send out a letter to just 72 residents, letting them know that this is happening and why, and giving them the opportunity to opt out if they want to for any reason. And then what we'll do is follow up a few weeks later with the delivery of this. We'll remove their regular garbage cart, and we go with this, and it'll have a little notice on the handle that says, please start using your right wing, reminder to keep it in a locked position, and, you know, how to contact us with any questions, and we want to invite feedback during the entire pilot program, so we'll be asking people to let us know what they think, so we can track that, and we'll have information for them. We would like to run the pilot through the end of May, and in mid-May, we'd send out another letter to the participants, letting them know that we're coming to the end and what our next steps are, and we would want to have some conversations with city staff about what those next steps might be. Maybe we decide we didn't like them for some reason, or maybe we decided we love them and we want to keep them, maybe we want more, maybe we want them for organics as well as garbage. There's more and more carts on the market all the time, and some of them now don't have, there's one, there's two on the market that don't have this mechanism, it's just kind of a latch, and I want to test those, because the early versions of those that were on the market, I was told that a raccoon could actually push the button and release it. So we might have to do some more, but anyway, we would be able to do that through the end of May when we've done this for several months. Some key points to the pilot is that participation is optional and no charge, we're not changing anybody's service days.
You know, you might want to speak into the microphone, so that way.
That's fine, I forgot, sorry. So again, the key points would be participation is optional and no charge, no change to service days, we're offering this only to customers who already subscribe to a 32-gallon garbage container. There's going to be 72 homes that are part of the pilot, and we selected those based on a variety of conditions, wind, uneven pavement, narrow roads, so we could kind of get a feel for how they do in different environments. Let's see. I think I covered just about anything, or everything I can think of. Any questions about it?
I have.
Are you taking any volunteers?
If you'd like to be added, I'm sure we could.
I think we might be. I don't mind, but we might have some folks in the audience too that might want to volunteer.
We are trying to keep it in, you know, certain sections of the city, but if somebody is super interested, they can.
There's a few people on King's Road here.
That's one of the ones we looked at, right?
I think they qualify.
Right.
And are you doing this in any other cities?
No, just here.
Just us. Why Brisbane?
You know, because, I think because of the contract negotiations, right, it came up then.
Yeah, it started in Brisbane because of input we had from the Public Works Director, Randy Burrow, really wanted a program like this, and so Brisbane's a good spot for a pilot project anyway, and so we're going to start here, see how it works out. Works out, we will carry the program forward to the other cities that we serve as well.
Okay.
There are, I have some questions, I think for some residents, the turning of this handle might present a little bit of a challenge, it's a little tight, and so, you know, we're concerned about that as well, as opposed to, and also, if you, if you don't lock it, it doesn't lock. You have to turn the handle to lock it. There are other, we think there's other designs coming out that might be a little more foolproof, you don't have to remember to lock it, when you drop it, it'll lock, as opposed to having to turn the handle as well. So it's interesting, the manufacturers seem to all be focused on this stormwater issue all of a sudden, and they're coming up with various solutions. This is the first one we saw, and we actually have 100 of these, and we were starting with 72, we thought there might be some people who would really want to be involved, so we do have room to add a few more people, yeah.
Great.
Madison?
I just had a comment. Your necklace is awesome.
Oh, thank you.
I was going to make that comment.
It's really, it's perfect. Sorry, how did we two do it? And also, I think it might be beneficial in that letter to just say how they can access this video, if they say, you know, go on YouTube and search this, because that might get people, yeah, even more excited to be a part of this. So people in the audience who don't know, she has Oscar the Grouch on her necklace, so, those are all my comments. But I'm really excited to see how this goes, so.
My handle is broken. I have a legitimate excuse why, it would be good for our house to be one.
And I think I'm in the windiest location in town, so.
So 611, yeah, it is, yeah. I mean, it still does the job, but I mean, it's, yeah, it's broken.
How could it swap it out?
Is that right? 611 Humboldt Road.
Pardon me?
611 Humboldt Road.
Okay, thank you. Quick to make it up.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for, you know, taking our feedback, and in, you know, making the effort to come out with a prototype, or, you know, find a, you know, a product out there in the marketplace that might accommodate our needs, so, yeah.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, we are too.
One of the, one of the drawbacks is that so far, this is only available in this one size, and so we're still looking for other options for the other sizes.
You know, it looks bigger than the 32 that you currently have.
Well, it's taller.
I mean, it just.
I think it's taller and probably a little narrower.
Yeah, I guess so.
So it fits more easily in people's garages, then?
It's up here, Fred.
Pardon me?
It's right here.
Oh, no.
All her stuff is right here.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry.
Gotcha.
Well, thank you all.
A little slow on the uptake there, thank you.
So I have one question, were any animals harmed in the shooting of that video?
I don't think so. Doesn't look like it. They didn't get to eat, though.
That's right, there should be a little disclaimer.
I knew where it was.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact us as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, take care.
And by the way, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, this particular cart is, is here at City Hall, so if anybody would like to come by and see it, sorry, Maria has got control of it, and people can take a look and give it a try and so forth. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Very good.
All right, one more presentation. Item number C, acknowledge the Beacon Spotlight Platinum Level Award from the Institute for Local Government and League of California Cities for Sustainability Best Practices. So that is a big deal, and so, Karen, okay.
Harry R. Akun is a hard act to follow, but, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, as I'm sure you know, the Institute for Local Government sponsors the Beacon Program to provide technical assistance, collecting, reporting, and tracking sustainability best practices, energy savings, and greenhouse gas reductions, and allow peer-to-peer networking, et cetera. And last year, the city received an overall Beacon, Gold Beacon Award for qualifying in five different categories. It spanned work that we've done over the past five years, and we augmented our application with work that we'd done even in the past year, and were able to elevate one of those categories, sustainability best practices, to a platinum award this year. It'll be awarded at the League of Cities Conference next month. Couple of things that we did to get to that next level were adopting the Open Pace Program with a number of options for energy upgrade financing, participating again in the Bay Area SunShares Program, doing FOSCA water conservation education programs at the elementary schools, joining the Joint Powers Authority for Peninsula Clean Energy, of course, receiving priority conservation area status for San Bruno Mountain area through the Association of Bay Area Governments and the like, and we had enough of those to elevate us to the next level on the sustainability best practices.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing that great news, Karen.
Can I give a comparison, because last year, Brisbane was the first city in the state of California to get a gold award, so we're the first city in the state of California to get a platinum award.
Wow.
Is that right?
That's impressive.
That is impressive.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, and I'm excited and honored to accept that award on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities Conference next month. And then, just kind of, you know, on a side note, but similar to this, so the sustainability framework was recognized in the Western Cities Magazine, which is part of the League of California Cities?
Yeah, there's an article in the Western Cities Magazine, which is a magazine of the League of California Cities, and it'll be in, I believe, the next edition, and it's a very nice article about the sustainability framework, which was adopted in the context of the ultimate Baylands development, and it's online if people want to look at it, but it's a very, very nice article about, you know, what Brisbane has done and what the city council leadership was in creating that.
Excellent, yeah, I'm looking forward to reading it. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any items that Are there any items that council members would like to, thank you, would like to?
Move approval of items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Item A, consider authorizing a letter prepared for the mayor's signature outlining the city's objections to the draft plan Bay Area 2040 proposed preferred land use scenario. That's serious business there, John.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Again, the Plan Bay Area 2040 is the regional sustainability community strategy requirement of state law, SB 375. It's the second iteration of the plan. The first was adopted in 2013. And again, with every one of these plan iterations, there's typically an assignment of regional growth to all the cities within the A-Bag area. And again, that's part of the effort that's included in the PBA 2040. And again, we do have some objections to the rate of growth that's projected, particularly in the Baylands area. We've gone through this previously with MTC and A-Bag, that the city's planning process is underway. It's our position, it's inappropriate for them to either presume what an outcome will be in terms of what the city council will choose to do, or somehow have their numbers be seen as trying to pressure or influence the city's decision-making process. So in that regard, we object to them assigning numbers, household numbers, that are not consistent with our current general plan. And again, that would be the thrust of the letter. In the 2013 plan, they did end up modifying the numbers to eliminate any growth projections based on housing in the Baylands area. And we would request and put in a letter form that that be done in this particular round of the update. And so we're requesting that the council authorize the mayor to sign a letter to A-Bag MTC outlining the objections that are discussed right now and more fully in the staff report. And then if the council wishes to authorize somebody to represent the city in any hearings before MTC or A-Bag when they consider adoption of this plan, that would be your prerogative as well. I'd take any questions you might have.
All right, any questions for John?
Well, I certainly concur with writing a letter to it. You know, I know there's a lot of folks here that want to speak a little bit later about airport noise. And what I find ironic is all this bayside development are all in flight paths, that they want to build homes and stuff like that. So somewhere, there's a real lack of coordination, I think, from all the agencies and stuff like that. And I know that they get this grand view from, no pun intended, but 30,000 feet up and say, "That's perfect." And you don't take sea level rise into account and all this other stuff. So I don't know. To me, I think a very well-pointed letter is appropriate, so, under your shape.
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
I'm in agreement as well.
All right. John, just before we let you go, you know, have you had the opportunity to speak with anyone at A-Bag or MTC?
Well, actually, yes. I mean, these processes evolve. And when we first heard about it last winter, they were saying they were going to kind of continue the growth projections that carry over from the last adopted version, which were quite reasonable for Brisbane. So that was their preliminary discussion. Then they came up with three different scenarios that proposed household numbers ranging from about 7,000 new to about 19,000 new households in Brisbane. And so we had quite a long discussion about the inappropriateness of that. And they said, "Well, we'll take that into consideration." You know, it was a meeting the city manager and I had with the planning director of MTC. So they have knocked the number down a little bit from what they had originally proposed, but again, we still believe it's inappropriate.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the planning process. They're not supposed to plan for our city. We are. All right, thank you.
I got named for those acronyms, but I won't say them publicly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John. All right, item B, consider planning commission interviews and appointment options and give direction to staff. So we have a couple of open seats that we were supposed to fill, actually, almost a year ago, right?
Yeah, you, in January of this year, the council considered appointments for three positions. You, at that time, decided to keep the existing commissioners, and they agreed to stay on through the ending of the Baylands planning hearings. At that time, we anticipated that to be the end of April. That did last a little bit longer, but it has now concluded. So we're bringing this back to the council to provide some direction on how you want to proceed. There's a couple of basic ways. One, we can just advertise for the three positions fresh, throw out the existing list and just do that fresh. The second is that we could just go to the list from the previous applicants last, well, almost a year ago now, but last January, and identify continuing interest on their part, and then set up an interview process for the council. Or you could do some combination of the two would probably be the third option.
All right. Well, are there any questions for Clay, or would we like to talk about the?
No, I think that we should put it back out, because I think, you know, 11 months or a year, you know, things change in people's lives. I know we had, you know, one commissioner who definitely did not want to reapply. But I think we should also put it out to more folks, because some of those who applied a year ago may not be interested anymore. So I think we should redo it and set it for January or February.
Yeah, I agree. And I think, just to make sure everyone is aware of it, I would suggest having staff contact the applicants with applications on file to see if they're interested and remind them of that there's a new application cycle.
Would we need to have a whole new application that they would fill out if it would be pretty much the same as the one they've already filled out? Or just ask them, "Hey, you know, are you still interested? If so, we will keep your application, and we will consider you for the next round." I don't think they need to fill that all out again, right?
No, no, no.
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's the way we would handle it. For those who want to, it's fresh enough, unless they wanted to update some of their thoughts, we'd give them the opportunity. But otherwise, we just have them indicate their continuing interest. If, so with that direction, we would probably advertise in the October star, give people probably a month or so to get their applications in. So you'll probably have a list sometime in November. So I think you could actually do your interviewing before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think whatever the standard time is, Clay.
Yeah.
Usually, we do it in January, don't we?
Well, that's because your appointments come up in January. But now, in this case, you're kind of a year late, so.
So would it be like a shortened term, or would it be a full term?
Yeah, well, the term is, would actually be shortened. You're correct. It would ultimately be three years. It'll go through 2020. Otherwise, you're going to get, you know, staggered off what the normal cycle is, so.
So we would wait till, we would make our selection, let's say, we give a month for them to submit their application. So maybe we would select them sometime late October, early November, but we wouldn't have them start until January, so that'd be exactly three years? Or it would just be like kind of three years and two months, essentially?
Well, okay, in terms of, the way I would see the timing is that we maybe have a list by the end of October, first part of November. We would present that to you. You usually review them and then set a date to do the interviews. And that usually takes some time to do so. I mean, it probably won't be until the end of the, near the end of the year that you actually get the interview process done. So we have a schedule here on their agenda for your end-of-the-year meetings. And now, thinking through that, you might appoint on December 8th, but it may go into January of next year. But I would think that whenever you made the appointment, the person would take office almost immediately from that point forward. Because you may also be reappointing commissioners, in which case, it's more seamless. It doesn't necessarily mean three new people. It could be two existing people and one new person, however you end up, you know, making that decision.
So now that the Baylands process is wrapping up for them, there was a commissioner that stated that they didn't want to continue beyond that. Would they fill out the remainder until December, or?
I believe he has indicated he is.
Yes, he's indicated he's willing to serve through, and he is actually reconsidering whether or not he may apply if the council provides that option. So he has not made a final decision.
Oh, okay.
All right. Last question.
We'll go ahead and start the advertising process.
Thank you, Clay. All right, up next is staff reports, city manager's report on upcoming activities, including the Parkside Plan next steps.
Yeah, I just thought it would be useful to just kind of come back from the last meeting and just kind of review, I think, at least from staff's perspective, where we're at. There was a very, very good, robust conversation at the last meeting about the Parkside Plan. And I think out of that, there was a desire to have Councilwoman O'Connell and Davis continue to work on the idea that they presented at the last meeting with the, and do that with the consultant. So that would be kind of an ad hoc committee to do that. And then the other parcels, which is basically 125 and the shopping center, which is more of the economic development retail opportunities, would continue to be under the purview of the Economic Development Subcommittee. So we'd have two different council subcommittees. And I did review this with the city attorney. It's a somewhat unique approach, but as long as we kind of keep them separated, he feels that that's, that will work fine. And then I thought perhaps.
I feel neglected.
Well, actually, I was going to suggest, Clark, that maybe you and I could be the committee to look for brew pubs.
This is some great.
Fun research, or?
Well, yeah. I was thinking of extensive field research.
Yeah, so, yeah, council discussion. Do you think that's a good idea?
It's fine with me.
Fine with that.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea.
I think Terry would be fine with that.
I think Terry would be fine with that, too.
Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, and, you know, I just want to say, I thought that our last meeting, when we discussed the Parkside Plan, was excellent. I thought it was one of those moments when the city council just came together, you know, with the community members who were in the audience, and we really planned, you know, for a wonderful vision for our city.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, you get the right pieces together, and everyone's listening to each other, and, you know, you can do great things. And I'm excited about the work that you and Terry will do, getting us to that next step. And Lori and I will be working on that other side. And I'm sure that when the visions come together with the help of MIG, the consultant, it'll be a great entryway into our city.
I totally agree. Thanks for that. It's a compliment, thank you. I would have to say, I'm actually really impressed with MIG and city staff, because I was kind of nervous that maybe they would say, like, "Well, this is not feasible," or be a little upset that we had kind of done our own thing. But I just thought that they handled that with so much grace to say, "Hey, we can make this work, and we can work out the fine details," instead of, obviously, they're urban planners, and they have that background, and they know what can and can't be done. But I just thought that that was really nice, that they were embracing and willing to work, and were able to see kind of a community vision coming together, and instead of being, feeling like their toes were stepped on. So I feel like we really picked the right consultant to work with, with that reaction. So I'm very thankful for that.
Well, yeah, no, I agree. I think that they saw smart planning and a real desire to understand the process and be a part of it, take ownership. And any smart consultant would pick up on that and run with it. So, yeah, thank you, you and Terry, for taking the initiative.
No problem. Hope keeps getting better and better.
Absolutely. Okay, so, next item, mayor council matters. You know, we're going to talk a little bit about airplane noise, but if there's anything that council wants to talk about prior to opening up the airplane noise discussion, do you want to do that now?
No, yeah, I think, let's talk about airplane noise.
Okay, all right, okay. So, yeah, I want to thank people in the audience for coming tonight, and not just tonight, but just through the years, you know, being a part of this process. Airplane noise is an issue not just for central Brisbane or the ridge, I mean, it's all of Brisbane. And if we're going to come up with solutions, we do need to be thinking in that perspective, you know, that this is a citywide problem. I mean, it's a quality of life issue. And, you know, we, if we come together and work on it, we stand the best chance of being able to have change occur. You know, I was listening to Robert Reich give this interview this afternoon, and he talked about, yeah, I know, you know, the airplane going over, you know, just that kind of tone, you know, that political tone that exists in our country, you know, about, presenting fear and anxiety, and how that is such a corrosive way to accomplish goals. And that doesn't, that doesn't help anybody. You know, when we do come together and we bring out the best in everyone, that's when we make things happen, just like with the Parkside Plan. And I think that was a perfect example of how, you know, everyone's got differences. Everyone, you know, has got their opinions, and those opinions need to be heard. And those ideas need to be brought out and thoroughly vetted, so that then the best ideas come to the surface. So I thought we'd start with just a little update from the workshop that we had at the beginning of August. And so what it was, I brought in Kathleen Wentworth from Jackie Spear's office. Not only does she work for Congresswoman Spear, but she's also a former pilot from United, you know, has tremendous knowledge and experience. And we also brought in Bert Gannon from the SFO Noise Abatement Office. He's the director of that department, also very, very knowledgeable. And so what we've been doing at the roundtable is trying to identify these different procedures, not just in Brisbane, but throughout the county and in San Francisco, you know, that are creating negative impacts for people, you know, really for residents. And so, you know, trying to come up with a way that not only identifies what the problems are, but what are the cities that are affected? You know, how is noise created? And then, you know, by identifying what currently exists, what are the opportunities that we can do to make things better? And so I'm going to talk about the four procedures that are before the roundtable, that are in this document. It's a FAA response to their recent letter that talked about different changes that they consider feasible and not feasible. And this is part of this process called the FAA Initiative.
Can you explain the acronyms, too? Because I have no idea what some of this stuff means.
Absolutely. So what you see before you is a particular flight procedure called the 050. And it's a procedure that was, the FAA used to fly it on a more regular basis prior to the next-gen system being implemented. And the next-gen system is this GPS system that is nationwide. And throughout the country, there are these different metroplexes, these different territories. Ours is the NorCal Metroplex, which includes Sacramento, Oakland, SFO, and San Jose. So in the past, procedures used a land-based navigational. So in the past, procedures used a land-based navigational aid, maybe the top of a building or a mountaintop, you know, and now they use GPS, much more precise system. So when they rolled out this new system back in early 2015, a lot of procedures that benefited Brisbane kind of went away. This is one of them. This particular procedure was proposed by Brian Perkins from Jackie Spear's office. He worked on our behalf, right, he was listening to the citizens of Brisbane, and he came up with this idea. Instead of, if I, maybe if I could get that pointer, Ingrid, please, it'd be easier to show folks. Thank you. So instead of planes at night coming off the runway one here and flying up, and then going over Brisbane before heading south, or going this way and heading south, planes would fly out into the bay and then make a right turn and come down the bay. So that is one of the procedures that is being proposed as an RNAV procedure. Right now, it's a voluntary procedure, right? We want to get away from it being voluntary, we want to make it, this is something that at night, when the traffic is not very heavy, that they fly this procedure. And this one here, you can tell, doesn't hurt anybody, it's staying over the water. There's another nighttime procedure, it's called the NIGHT. Now, when planes are heading to northern destinations or eastern destinations, many times, right, they'll come off the one here, fly up the bay to the NIGHT waypoint, and then they will, they're supposed to go up this way and out. Sometimes they get vectored and they go this way, and these folks are complaining because of that vectoring. But the planes are supposed to go out here and then out. So when the FAA designed the NIGHT, they designed a procedure for going north and going east, but they didn't do one for going south. And so one of the requests that the roundtable's putting forth is, let's create an additional NIGHT procedure, you know, a southbound NIGHT. So at NIGHT, the goal is that either the planes fly, when they're going to Southern California, either fly up to NIGHT, out to Gobs, maybe to Whammy, and then Port and continue south, or do the 050 and go out this way. I can't tell you what those acronyms mean, Clark, you know, the NIGHT and the Whammy, and how they came up with that, but, you know, it's FAA, you know, jargon. You know, and let me just explain about nighttime. So, you know, to the FAA, nighttime's supposed to be from 10 o'clock at night to 7:00 in the morning. Obviously, you know, at 6:00, we don't need to set our alarm clock, because the planes are coming over. So the 10 to 7 is, even though the FAA considers that nighttime, it's really the time of the night when traffic is low. So sometimes planes, as we know, get delayed, and so there's that backup, and so those planes need to get flushed out from wherever they're going. And so the nighttime hours might start later than 10, unfortunately. But, you know, at least at the time when the air traffic is low, that these two procedures should be flown. Because the goal is, at least at night, not to have any planes fly over Brisbane. You know, we'll go home tonight after this meeting, and, you know, it'll be 11 o'clock or whatever, and some planes will come over. And it doesn't matter if there's, you know, if it's just one or two, it's just, they go over, and they're loud, late at night, and then it wakes you up, and then it's difficult to go back to sleep. And so we're trying to eliminate that for everybody. The other procedure that we talked about is the CANDLE. And these are procedures that are flown out of Oakland. And the CANDLE flights that we're concerned with are the ones that go to Southern California. There's a waypoint here called the LEJAY, and this one called the CANDLE. And what flights are supposed to do is go through this waypoint, this waypoint, and then out. There was a recent study done by the FAA, and they had shown that they are performing this procedure very poorly. About 46% of the flights fly through, or fly over, this waypoint. They also, when creating these new RNAV procedures, the GPS procedures, they put in their safety regulation for these RNAV procedures, that you can have a one-mile radius around that waypoint, so, which I feel is extremely bogus. You have a very efficient RNAV system, and you're using a one-mile radius to be in compliance, and that's wrong. But those are the rules. So, you know, you just, you can imagine, with a one-mile radius, if you had something that was more like a one-quarter mile radius, which is still, I think, very generous, the amount of planes flying through that waypoint, you know, would probably be, you know, under 20%. And so what is happening is that these planes are flying here, not going up here, they're cutting here. And what they're doing is they're coming down into Brisbane, so here's the ridge, here's, you know, Central Brisbane, right there's the lagoon.
Still within a mile?
No, most times they're cutting short, more than half.
Not even within a mile of the next-
Not even within a mile of this waypoint that they're supposed to fly over. But FAA has acknowledged that. So one of the things that we're working with the FAA at NIGHT is to have the planes fly through this waypoint, and then out the Golden Gate, and out to Gobs, which is out here, which was shown at the previous slide, and then down. I mean, I'm going to try and work hard to get them to fly this particular route all the time. Yeah, I mean, but we have to remember that there, it just isn't these flights and these flights, there are, you know, it's this cake, right, this three-dimensional cake of flights flying all over the place in this area. And so it's trying to understand where the planes are going and work within that space. One of the things that has been proposed, and we need to flush it out, I'm a little concerned about it, and that is planes coming out of Oakland, going to LJ, let's see, L-E-J-A-Y, and turning before they get here and heading south and going over SFO. And that the planes would be at around 10,000 feet crossing here. But the concern is that if these planes are coming this way, and these planes, the stick, are coming up this way, now you've created a situation where there could be head-to-head. And that then, maybe you're reducing the impacts of CANDLE over Brisbane, but the big problem, as we all know, is stick coming out of SFO. That's the real bad one. And so if these planes are coming here, and these planes are coming here, perhaps more planes than that will be vectored, and we don't want to see that. So what the document is requesting from the FAA is to fly this procedure as chartered as much as possible, don't vector prior to here, so that the planes will come over San Francisco, and then hopefully out to the ocean, and then down, not come here to Brisbane. So that's what we're proposing for this particular procedure. Now the stick, right, this is the big one. This is the one that we've been having problems with for a long, long time. And before it was, you know, it used to be called the port, now it's called the stick.
So you have CANDLE and you have stick?
CANDLE, stick, I'm sure that was the reason. So planes come out of SFO, here's the stick waypoint. Now, we used to have the SEPTI waypoint, which was north, but more west, right, it's closer to the shore, but it's a half-mile north. So, you know, I'm going to go back to the previous slide, because there's so many, well, I guess I can leave this one here. So here's the lagoon, so we can get some reference. So many planes, right, are being vectored. The goal is to have planes stay out on the bay for as long as possible, right? The problem that we're all suffering from, for the most part, is that the air traffic controllers are cutting the planes early, right, to save on fuel. That's wrong, right? They're providing this service for the airlines at the detriment of our quality of life, and that's got to stop. And so what we propose is to stay over the water as long as possible, and then come over to the water, over to the ocean, and then head south. So I was at a meeting, there was, there's another organization called the Select Committee for South Bay Arrivals. They're down in Santa Clara County, Santa Cruz County, and the southern part of San Mateo County. So they had a meeting with the FAA, and so I arranged to talk with some of these FAA officials after their meeting. And so there are these three departments that we're going to be working with. One is Glenn Martin's department, who has been tasked from the Transportation Secretary Horta to work out the initiative. There's another department that deals with the air traffic controllers. And then there's a third department that deals with the designers, the people who create the procedures. Now, the FAA is a very large bureaucracy, and they are dysfunctional as well. But of course, you know, they're a large bureaucracy, and that probably goes without saying. They have not been talking with each other, and that's been part of the problem. But they understand that they put forth this initiative, in the document, it talks about collaboration, and collaboration isn't, you know, you provide something, and then they provide something, and then you provide some, no, that's ping pong. You need to sit around the table and discuss what's going on, and how you can come together to create change that is meaningful. So the person that will design where the new waypoint's going to go, she asked me, she's like, hey, Cliff, where do you want to put the waypoint? And I told her, I can't tell you that. And the reason I can't tell you that is because four years ago, the city of Brisbane put forth four proposals to the FAA, and they were pretty specific. Everyone got shot down, right, for whatever reason. It's like, okay, you know what, I'm not going to play that game anymore. You tell me where the area is restricted, and then I will tell you where we can put the waypoint. And then, of course, that will come from, you know, collaboration with all of us. But the last thing we want to do is put a waypoint in a place that they will say no. We want to put it in a place where they say yes. So get the waypoint out here somewhere, perhaps, so that the planes will stay over the water longer, so that they're higher by the time they reach land. You know, being the chair of the roundtable, I know that some people think like, oh, I'm not, I'm not as dedicated to Brisbane as I should be, that I'm thinking of everybody. And, I don't know, maybe there's a little bit of truth to that, but, you know, just my own general nature, I'm not going to, you know, I'm going to be fair with everybody. And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if it's my own city, you know, I'm, you know, when you get on one of these bodies, whether you're the chair or not, you're part of a county organization, you have to work together as a county to, and be fair. And so, you know, one of the requests from the people has been, you know, let's stop the planes from shortcutting. There's also been the request to, let's spread out the planes, you know, in different areas from when they're making the turn. And so I know that there's some folks that think that perhaps recently with planes going over the ridge, that maybe I've had a part in shifting noise to the ridge, and that's not true. But I will tell you what I have done on behalf of the citizens of Brisbane, and this is feedback that I've gotten from all of you, are those two things, don't shortcut, right, don't vector unless there's a safety reason. And, you know, have the planes go over different areas. And so before the next-gen system, Central Brisbane was getting most of those flights. I mean, when you look at where the stick waypoint is, right here, and then the SEPTI was up here, you know, planes would have to just come here and make a really tight turn to come in to Central Brisbane, you know? So what was happening, they were just, it became such a, just an abuse of, of, just, you know, like habit from air traffic controllers, like, okay, plane's flying out here, I'm going to turn it south as quickly as I can, I want to get it off my radar screen, and that's what was happening. And so Central Brisbane was just getting hammered, and then, of course, you know, folks out in the ridge, there's not really a problem with us. I mean, you know, you'd get some planes coming over your homes, but not that much. Folks out in Daly City, Cal Palace, or San Francisco, you know, you look at the complaints, you look at the flight tracks, not much. And so, you know, I have sent letters and emails, left voicemail messages, and talked with FAA people, saying, you got to spread it out. And so, and I know, you know, some of you are, you're really into the data and looking at the flight tracks, you can see, you know, planes are actually being vectored before they even get to Brisbane. Some go up fast and they go, some go to Central Brisbane, some go to the ridge, some go out to the Cal Palace, some go out, you know, to Hunter's Point in San Francisco. I mean, so it has been dispersed, but no one's happy, right? No one's happy. I mean, I see your emails, you're angry, and you have every right to be. You know, there are solutions. And so if these solutions are neglected by the FAA, of course, we're going to be, we're going to be angry. The FAA spent millions of taxpayer dollars on this new system, and they're flying it like it's the old way, right? They're not using the technology. So that's an update of what we've, you know, what we did at the workshop, and we've incorporated some feedback that we got from people at the workshop into the response framework. And so there's that. And so then the next part that I want to talk about is, and, you know, I've been thinking about, like, how do I, how do I present this? Because it's uncomfortable for me, it really is, you know, I mean, you know, when there's misinformation that's put out, you know, to me, it harms the process. And I know that, you know, sometimes people put out things that they don't know all the information, but they kind of think that that's what's occurring, and I know they don't do it to be mean, or to put folks down, but we need to come together, right? We need to have a united front, and I'm not going to say who wrote this, but I'm just going to just say it, I'm just going to read it, you know, what the post was. And this was prior to the workshop, and, you know, it says, "We already receive a lot of airplane noise from SFO in Oakland. And under proposals by the FAA, Brisbane is about to be locked in to receive significantly more for decades to come. And our mayor is agreeing to this plan, and it will be permanently bad for us." Now, the FAA is not proposing anything. They've already, they put forth their next-gen system a couple years ago. They have understood that they made a mistake, because they didn't listen to people, right, in the planning process. in the planning process. And so they've given us this window of opportunity to collaborate with them. There was another post, it was on residents of Brisbane. It said that new changes will reroute flight departures directly over Brisbane. And again, that's, that's, that's not accurate. I mean, we're already dealing with this, right? There isn't anything new that's being proposed, except there are opportunities to make changes to what currently exists. You know, one of the things that has been put forth is the petition, and I think that's a great idea. I mean, that helps to bring the community together and stand with one voice. And so what I did, though, is, you know, I know that you want the council to adopt that petition, right, and own it just like you. So to make sure that we're on the right page with it, you know, that we don't want to put something out there that, that restricts our ability to work with the FAA, that limits our opportunities to make changes. And so what I did was I shared it with our city attorney, Michael Rausch, and to get his perspective. And so, Michael, if you wouldn't mind, you know, just talking about those points, please.
Mayor and members of the council, I did have an opportunity to review the materials and take a look at the, at the petition. And there's sort of four, there were sort of four major points that were brought up in the petition. First, that, well, that the people who have signed the petition requesting the council to take a, a position on minimizing the negative impacts of jet noise on the city and the residents by, one, to protect all Brisbane residents equally, favoring none. That's certainly a worthwhile type of thing to have. And number two, require fact-based scientific studies to support all proposed changes. Not quite sure what it means by scientific studies. Certainly, fact-based studies would certainly be in order, and I think that's been part of the arrangement that the Roundtable has been working with the FAA to accomplish. Number three, replace, add noise monitors to collect data for comparison with prior year's samples. Again, conceptually, that's, that probably makes sense. I think the council has to have some discretion about when and where those data points or those noise monitors would be placed, how many, where warranted, et cetera. So that would need to have a little bit of, a little bit of tweaking there. And then the fourth one, prohibit any Brisbane official or staff from binding the city to any unenforceable FAA agreement. Well, first of all, I'm not aware that the, no city official or staff has authority to bind the city to any agreement, enforceable or unenforceable, without the full council's approval of that. And so I guess the way I would look at item number four is that the citizens are really looking for assurances that the council will keep the community informed if the city council is going to give direction to its officials or staff concerning the city's position on changes in airport operations that may affect Brisbane residents. Seems to me that that's more in keeping with the intent of number four, and it's something that the council would have authority to do, as opposed to a more blanket prohibition that really is not something that the council would certainly either want to do or legally could do. So those are sort of my comments with respect to the items that are identified in the petition. I think it accomplishes what the citizens want, but it's consistent with what the council's authority, both individually and as a body, can do.
Okay. Thank you for that, that feedback, Michael. All right. So there's kind of an overview. I mean, I know that we have some folks who want to talk and...
May I respond?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six, twenty years ago, an airport spokesman, actually it was a former Foster City mayor, his name was Roger Chen, who, after he retired from the council...
I've been dealing with Roger, yes.
Came a spokesman for the airport and came to Brisbane, did a presentation. At the end of it, he goes, "Is there anything that you guys want to give us on feedback?" And I told him, "Yeah, turn left later." He said, "What?" And I said, "Turn left later. The planes need to turn left later." And really, when you look at this, you know, you look at the map, and I've said this for years, water is a great noise insulator. We have a mountain that is a great noise amplifier. At nighttime, noise travels further. That's a known fact, right? Amplitude modulation, boom. So they shouldn't even be flying over any city at nighttime. And John Maza, you're a sailor, so you know, and you're out there on your sailboat, and the planes fly overhead, you can have a normal conversation and not, not even hear it, right? I mean, it's, that's a fact, you know, because that noise is being spread over the water. So what they should be doing and where we should concentrate our collective forces is saying, utilize the bay as the buffer. And forget about airline corporations' economic profits. People are more important. People are more valuable than a profit of some corporation. If you're worried about their fuel costs, yeah, we're worried about greenhouse gases and stuff, but, you know, that's not going to disappear. But don't worry about the profits of a corporation. They can raise their prices to compensate. We can't compensate for it as people. We're losing quality of life that affects our lives and shortens our lives. So the FAA should be looking at utilizing the bay because it's a perfect buffer zone. And they need to learn how to have their folks who control traffic from TRACON really control traffic. And so those that take off and go out over the bay should fly all the way up it and out the Golden Gate, both Oakland and San Francisco, or have the ones turn right and go down the bay till they get elevated twenty thousand feet before they hit San Jose, you know? So I think that really should be our collective message. Utilize the bay properly, not just at night, but during the day, too.
Absolutely.
And, you know, it's... Take the PDA plan. Of all this development, and I said it earlier, they want to do it around all these flight paths. And so that's just going to exacerbate the problem. So it says, "Okay, let's put on a vision, really look at it, that if this development around the Bay Area is going to happen in 2050 or 2060 or whatever, 20 whatever, that you really got to look at this now and start preparing for it and utilizing the bay a way it should be utilized." If they don't want to listen, I think people should get together and bombard the hell out of the court system and start filing small claims lawsuits on the FAA, on the airport, and every airline. Every time a plane flies over, you file a lawsuit, where it just makes people nuts and something will happen, and somebody will listen. And I know, Michael, you can give your legal, legal thing, maybe you don't want to, but, you know, people say you can't file a lawsuit on the airport. I say BS. You do, your quality of life is being affected. That small claims, that's, that's a different deal than filing a big lawsuit. And if people collectively get together and start doing something like that, if they don't want to listen, maybe that's what are to take. You just bombard the hell out of the court system, and something will move somewhere, you know? But, you know, people are fed up. That's obvious, you know? Thank God we've got some dedicated citizens who, you know, are really carrying this ball. It's nice to be able to focus on one problem, you know, other than what else is going in your life, and I appreciate it, and I know Cliff does, too, and, you know, he's doing, he's doing his best, okay? And don't, you know, please bombard him and make him the bad guy because he's not. I know, I know he's been working hard at this, and you've gotten a lot of attention. But I think our collective focus should be utilizing the bay properly. It should be no flyovers. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
I just wanted to say thank you for that really helpful presentation, and to, the fact that the FAA is willing to listen, you know, in our situation is remarkable because, you know, this Metroplex system has been aired out and rolled out across the country. And from what I understand, this is one of the few places where they're even willing to consider making changes. So I think that the idea of having it go out over the bay, you know, obviously, the nighttime noise is, I think, what's most concerning to me and to a lot of residents up at the ridge. I can tell you that since they've started this procedure, I can't sleep well at night. It wakes me up consistently. I don't sleep soundly, and I feel tired when I wake up. And I've heard that from numerous citizens. And I remember years ago when people in Central Brisbane were complaining about how loud it was, and I was like, "What? It's not that loud up here." And now I'm feeling it. So I, I really feel for the people at the ridge because I personally witness it, and I'm really grateful for the work that you're doing. I know you're doing the best you can, and I think that, you know, building these relationships with the FAA has been really helpful, setting up all these meetings and having phone conversations and just having a little bit of their ear is really, is really helpful that they're there to listen. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we will be able to make some progress, and if not, I'm grateful for the citizens that keep reminding us that there is work to be done.
I'm pretty much in agreement with everything that's been said. I think, you know, the first slide, if you want to go to it real quick, that, that was Brian Perkins?
Yeah.
And I think, I mean, that's a really good example of using the bay. So I think, to Clark's point, this would be something that would do just that. It really focuses on having the planes fly over the bay so they can get enough height so that when they do cross over any cities, they're high enough where the sound isn't going to have as big of an impact as it does now. I'd really like for us, as a community, to come together and work together cohesively. I think it has been a situation so far where there's been a lot of frustration and feeling like you haven't been heard or really listened to, and I think that that's maybe kind of gotten in the way of us making really good progress together as a team. And I think that that, you know, a lot of blame has been put on you, and maybe there has been some misinformation. None of this is perfect yet, and we all have to keep in mind that we live right next to an airport, and while that is extremely convenient, we're not going to be able to escape that noise. It's just going to be a part of our life. But I think if we really work together, we can find a plan that's going to use the bay, like Clark said, and I think that that's really what you've been reiterating this whole time, is waypoints that, if we fly through them, would allow us to use a bay in a way that would help, you know, reduce some of those noise impacts. So I'm really curious to hear what our community members think, and I'm really excited about us coming together and coming up with a plan that's going to make things better and not continue to allow things to remain the way they are. So I'm interested in hearing what you all have to say.
Yeah, well, that's a very good segue, Madison, because I will pick up these slips right here, and first person is Peter Grace, and Peter has some slides that he wants to show, and like you were saying, Clark, I mean, some of these folks, like Peter, have dedicated many, many years towards, Peter... Oh. Okay, so Tony, you want to go first, or... Okay. So anyways, well, we'll have you come up later then, Peter, at the end. Tony?
It's a nice little sign I made for you. I'm at 122 Warbler, and I'm also at 200 Valley Drive, neighbor of City Hall across the street. First off, as far as the petition's concerned, it's got something like 230 or more residents signed up on it at this point and still going. But the point of it, as the city attorney mentioned, is pretty much in accord with what he said. The idea is for us to get together, get on the same page, and have everybody supporting Cliff as our mayor to do the best that he can for all of us. And I don't have any question that that's what he's going to do, but the big problem from my perspective, and I think many of the residents who signed that petition, is that we weren't hearing it. We weren't hearing it. The problem's been here for years, and different initiatives have been proposed, but we're not hearing about the progress, and we're not seeing the progress. To tick down a quick list of history, I moved here, and our office moved here across from what wasn't City Hall at 200 Valley Drive in 1980, and there wasn't any airplane problem on Valley Drive in 1980. Whether we had our doors open or we had our doors closed, we don't have a highly insulated building, but it wasn't any problem working there. That has changed. That has only changed in the past year and a half. All my friends who live in Central Brisbane, remember the Lions Club, know quite a few people in town here, while they were experiencing the airplane noise that we weren't experiencing on the ridge, on Northeast Ridge, I wouldn't hear that much about it, although from time to time, I know there were initiatives. And I know there was another initiative, a petition that was, got like 400 some odd signatures on it. I'm not sure if they were all from the United States of America. But I say that because even the petition that we did, where all the members who signed it are Brisbane residents, it says some of them are from Daly City or San Jose, and I have no idea why. Part of the online stuff. It's a mystery to me. But specific problems are that in 2000, when we bought our house on the, on the Northeast Ridge at Viewpoint, there were plenty of planes coming over there, just like there are now. A lot of overflights, not just 38, as our statistics show. It went up from like 38 in one year, 2010, I think it was, to like, something like 138 or up to 200 some odd now, depending on the day. But we were having plenty of overflights, and they were noisy, but they weren't such a bad racket that you couldn't tolerate it, and you couldn't sleep at night. And I cannot explain why that is. All I know is that's how it was. Maybe it had a little bit to do with the fact that I came from San Francisco, where I was used to a higher background noise level, but I can't tell you, I can't explain it. All I know is that over the years of living up there, which is now almost 16, going on 17, the noise level seemed to have gone down. Now, maybe that's because they were jamming them all over Central Brisbane. I can't answer that. I don't know. Peter may have a better idea. I don't know if anybody has the stats that show that, where that traffic was going. But we do know that over that period of time, air traffic has gone up. It continues to go up, and it will continue to go up. And, and I can tell you that only in the past, since the next-gen operation came into play, now, whether I have my doors closed on Valley Drive or not, the thing rattles my brain, you know? And in other words, it distracts you from a phone conversation. It distracts you from whatever you're trying to concentrate on when you're working. And I'm not the only person that works on Valley Drive. I think that there's a business impact to every business that's here, just like sitting here tonight, we heard three of them go over during the evening, at least. So why is that? I don't know. I have a theory that just as GE invented the LEAP engine, which they say is 75% quieter, something like 30% less polluting, and 25% more energy efficient, the federal government hasn't mandated that everybody buy that engine and implement it. And of course, everybody knows you can't do that overnight. But maybe there's Airbus, because United was talking, the United rep that came to the Roundtable meeting in August the 3rd, I think it was, was talking about his Airbus's and how noisy they were, and how they were going to put some little retrofit on that everybody was laughing at when they did the demonstration because it was so weak. Maybe some of these manufacturers of engines are just making engines that are more powerful. They may be more energy efficient, but they may be more powerful and more noisy. Maybe that's part of the reason. I can't tell you what it is. All I can tell you is that now, when they come over the house, and they're coming over... All I can tell you is that now, when they come over the house, and they're coming over Valley Drive like it's a runway, from either east to, east to west, or, or north to south, and they're coming over my house up at Viewpoint, which is right on the promontory of the Northeast Ridge, they're coming over there all directions, not just one direction, all directions. And of course, some of it depends on the weather and the wind, and we understand that from what Bert was saying. But it's just coming like spaghetti.
Yes.
And it's coming all the time. And, and the most disturbing part of it is that regardless of the elevation, the altitude of the plane, they're noisy as hell. The other thing is, I can hear them taking off from SFO now, from my house, before I can see them. I hear them two minutes before they break over the bay. They're over the water, and, and I'm not contradicting what Clark was saying. You know, it's a good point that the water can be an effective buffer. But that's when the water's choppy. When it's windy, which we always get normally in the afternoon, that helps a lot. But when the water's calm, then it's more like a timpani drum, and it's bouncing that stuff back up in the air. I'm not an acoustical engineer, so I can't explain how it all works. All I know is, I hear it really, really well, and I got great ears. So, uh, so I think that that's an issue that the roundtable's going to have to consider and not assume anything. And that's why in the petition, it said, it talks about fact-based. Scientific is because science backs up facts. You know, facts is not just something somebody said is a fact. There has to be some way to prove it. And that's where those noise monitors come in. So, I just wanted to make it clear to you that altitude is not necessarily the solution. And last weekend, I was up at Boy Scout camp in the Sierras, doing some work up there, closing up, and that place is at 4,000 feet. My house is, I don't know how high on the, on the Northeast Ridge, maybe 700, 800 feet, I don't know. I, I have a letter here.
200.
Report from, a report from the 2011 Roundtable, that a lady named, I guess it was Patty McDaniels, Daniels, was saying that a lot of these flights are coming over Brisbane at 16 to 200, 2,000 feet. It seems right to me, because they seem, they seem like you could reach out and touch them practically sometimes. But the bottom line is, that these planes are getting noisier. If I'm up at 4,000 feet in the mountains, and the plane's flying over at 30,000 or 40,000 feet, generally, they're not a problem, except at night, because there's no noise. But then I also heard one go over that sounded like it was right here. So, I can't explain all that, but I, I'm, I just wanted to give you that extra feedback as you're working with all of these experts, because I think they're putting out a lot of BS. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Tony. You know, I'm glad you, you mentioned the thing about the, about the studies, you know. So, you know, the FAA's got this window that's going to close for the initiative, and it's going to be, you know, probably end of November, December. So, there's not, not much time. I mean, they, we're not the only metroplex in the country. At the LA Metroplex, which is three times the size of our metroplex, they just put out their environmental assessment. So, a lot of the focus that they have, and then they don't have gazillion workers, they're going to, they're going to be on that. And so, the, you know, to have us, I, I, we, we won't have the time to do a study to, to then make the decision to make a change. But what we will do is, is, you know, work with our consultant, the roundtable consultant, Cindy Gibbs from Bridgen International, Kathy, Kathleen Wentworth from, you know, Jackie Spear's office, and the noise abatement office at, at the airport, to, to put forth your good recommendations, that then, to do the scientific studies, to make sure, using the noise monitors, to make sure that, that what is, has been implemented is actually making things better. We, we need to have that data, and that's, that's part of what's in the response, to make sure that the, you know, you're just not doing this thing with the FAA, and, and then they walk away. They need to be held accountable. And the only way that they can be held accountable is that they have to provide reports, you know, that show progress, or that they're slipping, and then provide a reason if they are slipping for that. And so, that, and that's in the, in the document. So, thank you, Tony. Next up is Emily.
I'm Emily Sitraro. I live on Margaret, way at the top of the mountain. I just had a really brief statement I wanted to make. I'd like to see some additional thought and planning to mitigate noise from all sources generated near our community, including Highway 101, Bay Shore, Tunnel Road, the Caltrain tracks, and airplanes. This would include construction to address additional population and all their vehicles. There are things that can be done. I'd like to see Brisbane become a real leader in noise mitigation in a community, which I really don't see as something that has been discussed before, so I just wanted to put this out there. I think disturbances from all sources need to be addressed. There's more to do. There's more day-in, day-out noise, and I think that there are things that could be done around the highways, around the trains, all those factors, reduce that baseline, and that would add to people's comfort. That's all I have.
Yeah. You know, Emily, before you sit down, I mean, I, you know, being on, on Margaret, you know, you're the, almost the highest street in Central Brisbane, and, and so I'm just down from you on Humboldt, and, yeah, you know, when you're, you're, the higher you, you go, the more of the noise that you.
Right. And you know, you see in some other, like, I've been in other communities where they have, like, the walls along highways. Well, you know, you might want to have a view of the bay, but maybe 101 could have some mitigation. They've cut a lot of the trees down along there. I've seen, I've seen them down there, and I'm like, "Oh, they're trimming," and the next thing I know, there's big, open patches. It's like, all of those things allow then the noise to swoop up the hill. And I just think, you know, there's, there's research that's been done out there, and I think that just having that in our minds as to how we could address all that noise that comes up the mountain could be really helpful.
Absolutely. And, and just before you take off, the, I just wanted to get your feedback on, on these four proposals for these procedures. I mean, do you feel that, that these could be helpful to reduce noise impacts?
I, I do think they could, and I think that, you know, collecting data and then seeing if they have been helpful, like, don't take my word for it.
Yeah.
Like, take, take measurements, see if there's a reduced number of complaints, see if there are reduced noise incidences, and then see if they need to be adjusted again. I think we need to leave that as an opening as well.
All right. Thank, thank you very, very much, Emily.
To the point about Caltrain, too. If you look at, like, Burlingame, by Burlingame Avenue, they've done a really good job with a lot of, probably not enough, but they have a lot of, like, dense bushes all along the train tracks and trees, but I think they're eucalyptus. But they have trees on the other side, so that's a, so probably not eucalyptus would be a good fit for us, but you got the idea. They're using shrubbery to kind of help balance or mitigate some of that noise.
Insulation, yeah.
Some communities build walls, too, like, literally, like a soundproofing wall.
Yeah.
Along one side, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Jim?
Hi, Jim Charis. I'm also on Margaret. And so, I actually like what Mr. Conway said about over the water. That's, I really think that needs to be emphasized as much as possible in the response. Okay, it needs to be addressed as much as possible in the response. The out, you know, ideally, we would fly all the planes from Oakland and SFO, kind of parallel out to San Quentin, and then turn south. But, you know, that's probably non-start, so we can only do what we can.
Yeah.
And I appreciate all the work you're doing. One thing I really want to emphasize that I brought up before is, you know, using the water especially for the Oakland flights.
Yes.
In particular. I don't see why, I think a major point of emphasis should be, at all times, those flights going out the Golden Gate, period, and then turning south over the ocean. Can you hear me?
Yes, no, yeah.
Okay. So, you're going to have problems, as you know, with those, the way they're either being turned early and vectored, or even on, when they're flying Candle, they're going to interfere with sticks, or whatever plane you have to go over the ocean, and that's going to be pretext for them to continue vectoring, and it's needless interference. So, it's going to give a lot more latitude for anything coming out of SFO, if those flights from Oakland, and that's easier, it's less fuel, it's closer to Golden Gate, to get those flights flying out there and then heading south over the ocean. It's going to, you know, alleviate a lot of problems, and I think that should be a preeminent focus.
Yes.
I don't know if it's doable. And not only that, I mean, you're, you're turning these planes, and they're going low, they're going over Hunter's Point. I think if they followed the Candle, maybe they'd skirt Hunter's Point, but they're going over Hunter's Point, and Visitation Valley, low-income neighborhoods, hammering those people at about 4,000 feet, plane after plane after plane. And there's no need for that. If you get those out the Golden Gate, the vectoring excuse for SFO goes out the window. There's nothing to vector, there's no flights interfering. So, I'd really like the report, I know you've addressed it to some degree, but I'd like to see it highlighted. And also, I'd like to see more focus, an overriding emphasis on keeping planes over the water, and it's in there, but as much as possible.
Yes.
Number one. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Uh, thank you, Jim. I appreciate the feedback. Pat?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pat Tainer. I live on Butterweed Lane. Cliff, I'd like to address the procedures that you talked about tonight, as the roundtable response to the FAA. First of all, Candle is a problem. It's a management problem within the FAA. They need to fix that. And I guess they're going to do that. That's good.
Uh, um.
The Candle procedure flying out of Oakland.
Yeah.
In terms of early vectoring of flights coming out of there. That does impact whatever is sent over us. They need to fix that. If you look at the historical flight patterns coming out of Candle, significantly more of those planes flew over San Francisco, including the northern half of San Francisco, than do today. And so, for whatever reason, they are being sent more over us, noise has been shifted into Brisbane, not just the ridge, not just Central Brisbane, but all of Brisbane, and the noise needs to be shifted back out. So, what the FAA is going to be doing for Candle is good. I think that's, that's a good, good step forward.
I just want to be clear. I mean, the, the response is from the roundtable to the FAA. The FAA hasn't agreed.
I, I agree.
Right? I just want to be clear. I mean, I don't want to set the expectations, right?
They agree, they had a problem.
They said, they said, they said that they had a problem. They said that flying planes out the Golden Gate is feasible. That's the extent. So, I just want to be clear. I don't want to, you know, set up expectations for folks, and then, hey, Cliff, you said that they were going to do this, and, you know, but this is what we're asking, right? And that's, that's in the document, so I'm glad that you're on board with that.
Right. And they gave a presentation at the Roundtable, at the last meeting of the Roundtable, the FAA admitted they have a problem, and they are going to be working to fix this from a management standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The other, the other, two, two other procedures, NIGHT and 050, the, I don't think the Roundtable takes an aggressive enough stance on that. Those are existing FAA procedures that are in place, that are approved for flights. The FAA has the ability to cause the airlines to fly those routes now. We should not wait till next year. We should not wait for next month, or the end of the year, or whenever. The Roundtable should be saying, "FAA, start this right now." Nothing new has to happen. Nothing has to change. Nobody has to research anything, because these are existing, already-approved FAA procedures. And so, they should be implemented immediately. That takes care of a lot of our nighttime problems. They can set an hour time, whatever it is, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 AM, that all procedures must fly that instead of coming over Brisbane. I think that would give us a lot of relief. That would be.
Absolutely.
But the Roundtable should be more firm in its stance and say, "Do it now. Don't wait. Don't negotiate. Do it now."
Yeah. You know, the FAA has already agreed that they need to fly more 050s.
Okay. Good.
You know, so that is, you know, something that they've already acknowledged, you know, this initiative process, in, in that, yeah, it's great that the FAA has come forth and said, "Well, let's do this." The 050 was something that the Roundtable was working on with TRACON prior to the initiative, and the initiative is kind of, again, is this large bureaucracy. I wish, you know, I had the authority to say.
Well, we have congressional support. Congressional support is telling the FAA, "You need to, you need to get in line."
Yes. Now, the NIGHT southbound is not something that exists.
Okay.
Okay? So, I just want, again, just want to be clear about that.
And the 050.
050 is, is a voluntary, voluntary procedure. We're trying to make it an RNAV procedure, so it's a, you know, a regular thing at night.
Okay.
Uh, but we can't, but we're definitely, you know, going to be hammering them to fly that more often.
All right.
Absolutely.
Good. Good. The final thing is stick. And that, so, the, the nighttime flights within the city of Brisbane, what complaints that we see on the Stop Jet Noise app, the flights that are occurring in the nighttime hours are about 30%, 20 to 30% of the noise complaints that are occurring within Brisbane. So, now, let's talk about the remaining 70 to 80% of the complaints, which is the stick procedure during daytime hours. And the Roundtable response is inadequate. It is not sufficient to simply move that waypoint some short distance north and then gain altitude, because analysis of those noise complaints here in Brisbane, we know the altitude of these planes when we complain. We have the database. Whether the plane is at 3,000 feet, it can create a noise nuisance. The plane's at 6,000 feet can create a noise nuisance. We're not going to gain that much altitude by moving the stick waypoint further north and east, because there's a ceiling. They can only go so high before, you mentioned the layer cake effect, before they run into the next layer. So, there's only so high that they are going to be able to go. Altitude is not the solution.
What is your suggestion?
Geographic dispersion. If you look at the flight tracks that were done under the old procedure, the SEPTI procedure, they were more widely distributed geographically across the Northern Peninsula. Yes, Brisbane got noise. Yes, Daly City got noise. Yes, San Francisco, Visitation Valley, and elsewhere got noise. And we do live near an airport, and we accept that we're going to have some noise. But the, what has happened now with the precision of the next-gen procedure is that it is a highway. And so, it isn't just, "I have a noise now, I have a jet now, and 20, 30 minutes later, I have another one. I have one now, two minutes later, I have another one, two minutes later, I have another, and another, and another," and this goes on for hours. That is the problem. And some are at 2,000 feet, 2,500 feet, some are at 6,000 feet. We sometimes are affected by Oakland flights that are at 10,000 feet, in, in terms of a noise nuisance creation. Altitude is not the solution. When we look back at the SEPTI data, and I didn't live in Brisbane before last year, but when I talk to my neighbors, they tell me, in the past, under the SEPTI procedure, yes, we had noise, but it is nothing like what it is today. Even in Central Brisbane, people, residents of Central Brisbane, tell me that.
Well, yeah, that would have to go back quite a few years.
Okay. All right.
Right? Maybe like 10 years ago.
Okay.
Maybe it wasn't so bad.
All right. So, there's something to be.
I'm talking about Central Brisbane, you know, at least 10 years ago. I mean, yeah, that's, it isn't like it, it wasn't that bad a couple of years ago. It's been bad for a long time.
I agree. I agree. So, the solution that's being, the, the ideas that have been put forward in the Roundtable document regarding the stick procedure are not adequate.
Let me put this out there to you, Pat. We need to establish a waypoint, right? That, that is an automatic, right?
Going out the gate is the way to.
So, you know, yeah, sure, we'd all love to have that happen, but, you know, you're going to want me to represent you in putting forth something that is realistic, right? I could, I could shoot for up here and just get nothing.
Isn't that kind of how we all set our goals in life, anyway?
Not for the FAA. Those rules apply with them. Okay? So.
Has the FAA said this is impossible?
Yes, it is. Yeah, so that, that's off the, I mean, even trying to get the Candle during the daytime hours through, you know, through the Golden Gate. hours through, you know, through the Golden Gate, is going to be extremely difficult. I don't know if we can do it, and that's closer.
Oh, they need to do it.
I, I, you know, like, area, but let me just put this out there, right? So, we have this existing waypoint that is close to Brisbane, we don't like it. We had the SEPTI waypoint, now, we could, you know, if that's the community's wishes, to have the waypoint be at SEPTI, we could do that. Or, I think if it was over the water, longer than SEPTI, because SEPTI is still closer to the, to the shore, closer to Brisbane, you know, from an east-west direction than the current stick is. So, so what I'm saying is that, say we had a waypoint that was further north and, and east, and we asked the FAA to disperse the planes in a more fanned-out direction, would that then accommodate what you're asking for, Pat?
So, this is where we get into the catch-22 of this entire initiative.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer, an acoustic engineer, I'm not an aeronautical engineer, none of us are. And yet, the FAA, who is, is asking us to tell them what the solution would be. That's, that's, that's a catch-22, because we don't have the expertise, nor the knowledge, nor the database to make those. What we need to be telling the FAA is, get the noise out of the land, get the noise off the peninsula, you go figure it out, you have the knowledge. Now, an alternative here is to do what happened in Phoenix. The city of Phoenix sued the FAA, and they completely retracted this next-gen system in total. There's an awful lot of people in the Bay Area who are extremely upset, I know that's a very bad option. But all the way down to Santa Cruz and Monterey, the entire peninsula is upset with what the FAA has done. And, and we're sitting here, trying to work with the FAA, and they're telling, they're being very coy. They're saying, well, we'll consider what you're saying, tell us what to do, we'll consider it, and maybe we'll do it, and maybe we won't. I'm sorry, that, that's not, that's not a very upfront approach.
I agree with you.
That's not, that's not right. Okay?
Okay.
Right?
All right, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Jay?
Jay Patel, Lillikort, at the ridge. Thanks for setting this up, at least, putting this on the agenda. I have a few comments, I guess. We had the, I appreciate having the first workshop, but we did run out of time in getting into the details of stick. And I guess, the devil's in the details of stick. You know, we, we had a letter, I guess, back in May, that we were trying to get out to the FAA, and then that got squashed, because there was a disagreement between the community and a second waypoint, which could actually bring in more flights. So these are the kind of details that we really, really need to get into as a community. A second waypoint can actually have a funnel effect. I guess, we are going to have another workshop, or get into the details of stick, but things are not okay with just, philosophy is stuck in what would be a better way of dealing with stick procedure. Unfortunately, I guess, Clark has a great idea, but I don't think the FAA is going to do that in the next one or two years. So in the meantime, I think we need to strategize and identify the issues. There's a lot of vector comments being made, and the vector is the issue, I don't think vector is the issue at all for the ridge. It's the procedure itself. Stick, when they change SEPTI to stick, that is doomsday for the ridge. I mean, now we get flights, you know, we've all talked about it, I mean, 5:30 in the morning, 5:40 in the morning, and then right at 6:00, every two minutes, one minute, three minutes, flight after flight after flight. Right, so that's, that's, I don't think central Brisbane ever had that type of occurrence.
Oh, no, it did. Not, not so much anymore, I, but it did, it was.
I know.
But it was a market change about, like, years ago.
We used to have planes over and over and over and over again in central Brisbane.
We still do.
Well, what he's saying is, as soon as the procedure started at the ridge, it all of a sudden became much louder, more frequently.
I would, I would, I would challenge you to give me the report from the, the water tower, and I'll give you the 2015 report, and then we'll compare notes, right? That's fact-based.
We've always had noise here, but it's worse now.
Yes.
It is worse.
Right, that's my point.
No matter where you live. And that's point A on the petition.
So.
We're all one.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, we're all one community, it's not us against you, and none of that. The point is, it needs to be acknowledged that we're getting, at any given date, over 200 flights a day, that's absurd. I mean, it's just, it's insane.
Yes.
It's having health effects, I mean, I've sent you guys studies from Harvard, Oxford, I mean, these, these things are real, they're fact-based, these are leading institutes in the world. I mean, so it's not just a ABC university. So it's the procedure itself, the language always talks about vectoring. So I think we need to work on that as a community, to identify the issue, right? So then, when we respond to the FAA, it's accurate. If FAA only sees vector as the language, they say, oh, all right, we don't vector that much, so we're good, good to go, and nothing will change for the ridge. And then we talked about, at least in the short term, there's no reason why they can't go back to SEPTI. Right, I mean, the procedures are in place, I mean, that, that is a procedure for decades, I suppose. So certainly in the short term, they can go right back to SEPTI right away, share that with the communities, like, hey, for two weeks, a month, we're going to try SEPTI and see how things work out. But, at the end of the day, I think, for our community, for our city, we have to go back to historical flight paths. I mean, you know, we, we bought our properties, we bought the lifestyle, and, so we have to look at historical flight tracks, and they were north of us, and there are different parts of the, of the peninsula. And for us to get hammered after the fact, it's pretty bad. It just doesn't work out. And the no-shifting policy, I mean, every time I hear the no-shifting from, from the roundtable as a philosophical issue, I mean, it really rubs me the wrong way, because it was shifted to us, and then now you can't just have a no-shifting policy, right? That does, I mean, that doesn't work. So it, it does need to get shifted, we have to acknowledge it, it needs to go back to its historical flight paths, I mean, that's what it is. I guess, a simple analogy would be, if I bought a house next to a railroad truck, you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
But buy a house, and then they build a railroad truck right next to your house, then you're, you got screwed.
Mm-hmm.
And the ridge is getting screwed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to make one quick comment. So I feel like I'm just, from the way I'm understanding it, a lot of different suggestions. And what concerns me is the idea of giving FAA the power in deciding what is best, in terms of what will reduce the most noise, because they have that background in being, in having those engineering skills and understanding how noise works better than we can. But I feel like that's also a catch-22, to give them that authority, because they've had that authority up until now, and it's continuing to get worse and worse and worse. So what I'd hate to see is us really missing our opportunity here, and saying, oh, well, we know all the problems, we're going to point all the problems out to you, now you fix it. And so I think, I agree, that both ways can be challenging, and both ways may set us up to make the wrong decision, where if we decide where it is, then we may not pick the best choice, and then we're stuck with that, because then they'll say, oh, well, we worked with you, so now you need to live with that. But on the flip side, if you're going to say, hey, you figure it out, well, they've already demonstrated that they're not taking care, and they're not, they're not dispersing the noise properly. So I'd hate for us to squander the opportunity that they're giving us, and say, you figure it out, and then we're in even far worse situation, or the same situation. So I just, and I don't know if I misunderstood you, Pat, so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand better, because I don't want us to sit here and fight about, or argue about, there's more noise now versus 10 years ago, or whatever, there's a lot of noise, and it needs to go away. I want us to really figure out together how we can come up with a plan that works well for our community, and while it may not be perfect, because we don't have that engineering background, at least we're getting somewhere. So I know there's a lot of hands raised, but I just, I really want us to, to come together and start working towards something, instead of just throwing the ball back in their court, and then being really screwed later.
Uh, thank you. Jagdeesh?
I, I, I live in Butterweed Lane, up on the ridge. So, you know, I'm going to pick up where, where you left off, Madison, and suggest that, you know, we do need a monitor up on the ridge, but we, and I, it's my understanding that there are already a number of monitors around. Maybe the solution is, we just have a decibel level for a certain number of hours in the day, and if it crosses that, then the FAA has to make adjustments, because you're right, I'd hate to see that the FAA makes some adjustment, and says, okay, we're done for the next 10 years, and then just the number of aircrafts and everything, if the population increases, the construction increases, the number of aircrafts increase, and we're back in the same situation, you know, in another year. So, I wonder if we could have just a decibel level, and for it, for a number of hours, and it should be kept to below a threshold. And, and if it isn't, then the FAA has to make certain adjustments. I mean, I think Councilman Conway, what you suggested was that, was the ultimate solution, and they probably will push them towards that, which is to keep all the flights, or most of the flights, on the, on the bay. And, and then there's, there's really, that's optimal, I mean, after that, I don't think there's much else we can do. But I, I think noise monitors definitely give us the scientific basis, and, and, you know, show that the proof is in the pudding, because that's not, that's not going to, that's, that's probably even better data than people recording at stop.jet-noise. But on that, you know, it would be nice if the city takes, takes sort of a position on where we can come together, work together, record this information, maybe it is Stop Jet Noise, or is, if there's another website, and so we have the data when we go to the FAA and say, listen, these are real complaints from the entire city as a whole. And, and, again, that, that serves as another threshold, where if the number of complaints cross a certain, certain level, you guys are doing something wrong, and you need to, need to correct that. But overall, I do, I do appreciate all the work you're doing, and, and I agree that we've got to, we've got to come together on this issue and speak with one voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Jagdeesh?
Yeah, Cliff, you know, we do have a noise ordinance, but, and, and, city attorney stepped out, but we have a noise ordinance, that, but I know there's, like, thresholds of, like, 60 dB, and Bob, maybe you can speak to it, because the police department is the one that enforces the noise ordinance. Maybe you can speak to what's in it?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't have the specifics, but generally, the problem that we have with, with regulating noise is, is the duration. So the amount of time it takes a plane to fly over doesn't, doesn't usually meet the threshold for a duration of a loud noise. There, there is a maximum decibel, but, but it's extremely high, and, and even though I know these planes are loud and annoying, I suspect that they don't meet that threshold for a single event noise.
Well, I know the city attorney's not here, but I guess, maybe that's a question we should ask, is, can we change that threshold ourselves in an ordinance?
Yeah, well, the other consideration is, that we've discussed in prior discussions about the noise ordinance, is that in order to enforce it under any condition, we have to establish an ambient noise condition. And, and the last time we, we took a look at the ordinance, we reduced the amount of time that we need to measure that, that, to come up with the ambient noise level, but however, that's the other problem that's problematic, is we have to establish that before we can establish a violation. So we'd have to figure out how we'd fit that into this scenario, in terms of, of airplane flyovers.
Yeah. Michael, we were just talking about noise ordinance, and Bob was saying that, you know, single events that, you know, don't transpire over a long period of time, which, you know, the noise ordinance falls under. Can we lower our threshold for single events, like, you know, if a plane flies over and hits a certain decibel level, even if it's 10 seconds, is that something that's?
It seems to me that, you know, if you, if you lower it for, for this reason, that it would be more difficult to enforce, or to try to bring a successful lawsuit based on that, on that, on those grounds, because essentially, you're, you're, you're doing it for a particular purpose. Cities have attempted to use their noise ordinance with respect to these kinds of things, airplane noise in particular, and it's been very difficult to be successful on that, because of the, because of the fact that there's a great deal of discretion in terms of where the planes can go, and there's a federal preemption argument. We can certainly look into exploring whether or not the city's nuisance ordinance could be applied successfully in this type of situation, but I wouldn't want to hold out, you know, a lot of, a hope that that could be successful, but we certainly could look at it.
Yeah, maybe look at it from, from a perspective, and, as the council agreed, of course, but from a health and safety point, because, you know, I guess, you know, what Jay Patel was talking about, the, he had sent some studies from Harvard, and one of the other Ivy League schools, John Hopkins, I guess it was, that shows that aircraft noise has an effect on health, and that, you know, maybe that's something that, you know, we should look at. I, I think it's worthwhile, at least giving us some kind of teeth, if the FAA is not willing to listen, you know, that, not necessarily saying, oh, we're going after it for this, you know, this specified reason, but we're going after it from a health and safety perspective, and that's it, you know?
Whether or not it could constitute a, there's probably a stronger argument for a private nuisance theory, I think someone raised the issue earlier about filing small claims action, and in fact, I think, you may have mentioned that, that, that citizens around airports have done that in the past, and based on those types of lawsuits, the courts have said that those are, you know, those are legitimate, and I don't know how successful they have been, but they may have caused some, some change in the operation. We could look at in terms of whether that might constitute a public nuisance, perhaps a little more difficult to prove, but we'll look at it. We can certainly take a look at, at pursuing that, it's just, recognize that to have Brisbane take on litigation against the federal government is going to be an expensive proposition.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at all.
And we have to recognize the cost.
Yeah. I'm suggesting that it allows private citizens to at least have an avenue of saying, this is what our city ordinance is.
All right.
I have a question, actually. I'm John Maso, I'm at 306 Kings Road, and, actually, wouldn't, we wouldn't litigate against the FAA, we would go after the city and county of San Francisco. Wouldn't that, because I know that happened in the 80s, there was a, there was a big push to do that, and, and there was an agreement that, that happened around that, I don't know the exact specifics, but I do know that the, there is a lot of small claims court going on right now in San Carlos, where active citizenry have, have taken, and the judge has allowed a small claims court against a, a new airline provider, who's been there two years, who is flying commuter planes, 200 flights a day. And I guess my point is, is the sentiment is changing with regards to those of us on the ground who aren't flying, but are paying the price of everyone who is flying. And I, I, I know that that's a bastion of last resort, and other people are utilizing it, and I do know that, that in the past, that we have, we haven't, but I think it was Burlingame, actually, tried to do something, Milbray, with the city of San Francisco. But that, that's just a point I, I wanted to bring up, but I also wanted to reiterate that I'm grateful that we're taking this on, and that we have to work together, that's the only way. but I think it was Burlingame actually tried to do something, Milbrae, with the city of San Francisco. But that, that's just a point I, I wanted to bring up. But I also wanted to reiterate that I'm grateful that we're taking this on, and that we have to work together, that's the only way. It's a big, huge entity out there. And, you know, as usual, okay, Brisbane, there aren't many communities of 4,500 people that have to fight the FAA, and, and we have to. Even though we're small, we've always had these big challenges, and the resilience, and really, the, of the people to work together has always made us what we are. And I just wanted to tell you all that we appreciate where we are. We need to go much further. And we have options that many of the airport metro areas don't have. We have a huge bag. And, and so I'm, I'm excited about those prospects, and thank you.
Thank you, John. Leila?
Okay, um, my name is Leila Aziz. I live at 315 Kings Road. So, you know, we're hearing a lot about the ridge. I think that the first point on the petition has to do with, we need to not have it be the ridge versus Central Brisbane, versus Western Brisbane, whatever, whatever. Okay, everybody's noise is everybody's noise. Respectfully, Cliff, I disagree. I think our noise has gotten a lot worse since Next Gen. On, the point B on the petition, fact base equals data monitors, okay? We definitely would like to see some data apples to apples, and that's why I volunteered my property for a temporary noise monitor. Because there needs to be something to compare the previous one. I believe it was at Seppi Richardson's house. So, I'll take that one, okay? On, point C has a lot to do with the point that you were making, Madison. We would like to see some testing before this gets written in stone. If that can't happen, then we need some kind of a guarantee that there's going to be some follow-up. Or if, if we're not happy with what's going on, or if it gets worse, or maybe more noise does shift to the ridge, or maybe more noise shifts over, like, to Laurie Street and that area of the town, which we haven't even heard about. You know, we need to know that we're not going to have to wait another two years, because that's what they're telling us. It's going to take that length of time to make any changes, okay? So that needs to be somewhere in there, and we need to push for that.
I agree.
On, secondly, I think that the noise monitor that is up above the water tower is not doing an accurate job. And that's another reason why I volunteered my property for a temporary noise monitor, okay? I just hiked it again yesterday and took a look, because I kind of got poo-pooed when I brought up my concerns about it the first time. There are eucalyptus trees, granted, not huge ones, but there are eucalyptus trees that are taller than the noise monitor on the lower side of it. Not to mention the fact that there is a huge water tower right in front of it that has to be blocking some of the sound waves.
Who'd you address that to?
My first email went to Bert.
Oh, okay.
So, but me going back and looking at it a second time yesterday, like, I was like, okay, am I crazy? You know?
That's a good point.
He was telling me that the speakers are angled upward, which is fine. However, it doesn't give us a good, accurate view or demonstration of what's going on with the echoing in the canyon and what happens for us down on the ground, living in homes. We don't live up in tree houses. Well, maybe you do, Clark, but...
A good one.
But you're not high off the ground, you know? That's the thing, so like those noise monitors measure. So that's a point that I just wanted to make about my little microcosm of Brisbane. Another thing that I think we need to push back on with the FAA is that, okay, so FAA implemented this Next Gen system. It's like, super badass. And all the GPS is like 10 times more accurate, and we're more precise and everything. But yet the waypoints got bigger, okay? Well, they don't just get to change the rules. You know, the waypoints got bigger and allowed for a lot bigger margin of error. And I think them not flying to their waypoints makes it even worse. So we need them to fly to their waypoints. We need the waypoints to be for some immediate relief. You know, we need immediate relief, and I don't care what it is. I don't care if we go back to Seppi, if we start doing more night, if we start doing O5O, whatever it is, we cannot live like this, okay? Seriously, we need some relief, and we need it now. We need to not have to wait two years. Because again, that's what they were telling us. Am I incorrect in that?
No, you're absolutely right.
They're saying that it's going to be two years.
If for a new procedure, but some of these things they can do now.
Well, they keep saying that they're doing things now. They keep saying that they're, another thing we can push back on. They said that they're having outreach with air traffic control. Has anybody seen any improvement?
No.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying, air traffic control is not helping us. So if they're talking to them, air traffic control is absolutely ignoring them. Something's got to give, you know? And it's one person that's flying those planes, out of Oakland and out of SFO. It's the same person. They can regulate what the hell is happening in the air, and they're not doing it. The choices are being made.
And utilize the bay.
Exactly, agreed, okay? So flights, so midterm goal, flights over water for as long as possible. Several of us are very concerned about there being any kind of a waypoint in the area of the baylands, in that bringing more traffic over us. Keep it over the water. Let's, I mean, I'm almost like, let's eliminate that waypoint from any kind of presentation. And thirdly, in the midterm, and what we're defining for our nighttime, 5:40 AM is not acceptable, okay? I mean, you know, we're saying, oh, well, we're going to keep them until, you know, 6:00 AM or whatever. Those flights start at 5:40 AM. People need to be able to sleep until 7 o'clock. You know, not everybody has kids and gets up at 5:00 AM. You know, some people work a little bit later hours, you know? I mean, I know that we're not going to please everybody, but 5:40 AM is not acceptable, period, okay? And that, that is when I get hammered. I hear 5:40, and then it's like 5:50, and then 6 o'clock, and then it's every two minutes. If you wanted to sleep in, you can't, forget about it. Okay, last but not least, I'm going to wrap it up. On, long-term, okay? And we did get a little bit of this addressed at the last noise meeting. The mayor of Pacifica, I think, heard what I said, and she put it definitely more astutely than I did. But the bottom line is, is that there's some regulation in place that pretty much renders the people powerless and renders any kind of regulation of the airline, airlines. They can't be fined, they can't be held accountable because of the current laws that are in place. And I know that the roundtable is starting to address that, and our legislature is hopefully starting to address that. But the council needs to be aware of that so that you can add your voice to Mayor Lentz and really make sure that we're pushing for that as well. Because I think now's the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, Peter.
Where's the clicker?
Where the...
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Ingrid, is it possible to put the lights down? Because otherwise, it's hard to see behind. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank, my name is Peter Grace, I live at 95 Kings Road. I've been involved in these noise issues since before 2008. It's, as you've seen me presenting here many times before. I would like to thank you, Cliff, for holding this meeting at such short notice and putting it on the agenda. Thank you very much indeed. I'd also like to thank the members of council who also believe that it's important enough to put it on the agenda and make it a priority tonight and not let it go out further. Cliff, I completely support your efforts on the O5O, the night, and putting the candle procedure through the gate. I think those are really positive things. And I'd like to talk about further things that can be done to help. What I'd like to do is show on the slide here is an overview. And I'd like to point out the basis of the Bay Area. I know that many of you councillors, other councillors have seen this before, but there are people watching at home on TV whom I believe this might be helpful for. So, in the bottom center, we have San Francisco Airport. The top right, we have Oakland Airport. This circle here is Central Brisbane. The further circle to the top, little top left, is the ridge. We have spent many times...
Ingrid, can you make it bigger on the screen? Just get rid of all the other stuff?
You just compress the, if you go to View, probably, and go to full screen mode.
Thanks a lot, Clark. It's hard for me to try and talk and also be aware. Thank you very much. So I said, we have got San Francisco at the airport, Oakland Airport, Central Brisbane, the ridge, this point, this procedure point called STICS that we're referred to many times. And also, the Oakland procedure points of Lige and Candle that Cliff has referred to many times. So summary, flights that we're talking about are ones that come off from Oakland, from San Francisco Airport, go up to STICS, and then turn. What I would like to talk about is, although, how do I get to the next one? Thank you. I would like to talk about the comparison of two noise studies that was done. There was one done in October 2010 with noise monitors at the ridge, at Lippmann School, and also at Seppi's house. And then, Laurie, I believe that you asked Clay a year and a half ago to try, saying that things weren't good at the ridge, and got another noise monitor put there. And this is the results of the study. In 2010, there were 35, or 38, or 35 noise events at, at the noise monitor at Mission Blue. Four and a half years later, after STICS had been implemented, this new system, in April 2015, for this period, the average went up from 35 per day to 138. This is what's driving the people on the ridge absolutely bananas. And to make it worse, this average, it had the highest, the high, it was a range of, it was an average of range of results. The highest number of noise events in the day was over 200. 237 noise events in the day. And the minimum was 25. At the moment, people are logging 125, 129 noise events per day at the ridge. There may be others who are doing it, but the ridge, to be honest, is getting hammered at the moment under this new procedure. This new procedure does not work. And while Cliff, you were saying this is due to vectoring, the noise report from April 2015 says that when the flights flew through the STICS waypoint, 65% of those flights created noise events at the ridge noise monitor. The fire hose of the flights from SFO on the STICS procedure is fired, is pointed straight at the ridge. The fire hose of the flights from San Francisco Airport on the STICS procedure is pointed straight at the ridge. It's not due to vectoring. This needs to be corrected. Noise is a huge problem. When you have a flood, for instance, do you put the sandbags where the flood was 20 years ago, or where the flood is now? We have a flood at the ridge. We need a noise monitor, a permanent noise monitor at the ridge now. We know it is too, there is not enough time to get it implemented and put in place to meet the deadline for the FAA report. But if you have a flood, you put the, you put the sandbags in place now. We need to spend the money to understand what's really happening at the ridge. Not to do so is remiss of our city council. As Cliff described, it's all of Brisbane that needs to be looked after. We have a permanent noise monitor up by the water tower, and we need one where the noise is now. Let me go on. What, what members of the public are responding to, and the way they respond at the moment within Brisbane, is by registering complaints of noise. So we have looked at, between the period, 1st of January to the 8th of August, there were 30,000 complaints. I sent this in your package to you when we added the petition as well. And what we, what we segregated up was between flights, and I apologize, these letters being small. The blue area is 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, 8,000 complaints. A little under three times as many are in the red area, between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Cliff's suggestions for the, for the O5O and the night are in what area? Are they the red or the blue? They're the night procedures, it's the blue area. We need solutions for the red area. I looked today at how many complaints there are for the period 1st of January to the 14th, 14th of September, and it's risen to 37,000 complaints. 37,000 times residents of Brisbane have taken the effort to complain about noise, the flights going over. I, I would like to talk a little bit about further analysis we've done. And that is, it's the idea that we can, by lifting the planes up higher, we can reduce noise. Yes, it reduces a little bit. The challenge is, there's an upper limit to which you can produce the noise, but there is still the noise envelope on either side. When you walk outside and see a plane, do you just respond to planes that are directly above your head? Or are you hearing planes that are sideways, that you're looking, you can look up at? When it's sideways, that you, this, you are inside the noise envelope of the plane and the noise it's creating. So, so height is helping, but this, but moving, moving the planes further away is a much better way, a more effective way, of reducing noise, which comes back to Clark's point about flying up the bay, getting the planes away from where the habitable, where the habit, where people live. And the truth of the matter is, on the peninsula, there's no good land. No matter where you fly, you're going to get, you're going to, in fact, impact somebody in this noise envelope that radiates down from each plane. So when you draw lines on maps, saying, oh, this is a good flight path, it's just not the people living right under that straight line segment. It's the envelope on either side that's, that's got to be considered. Let me make a correction. I was at a meeting with Glenn Martin, where he was asked about flying the planes from STICS through the Golden Gate. And his response was, oh, I'm going to get lots of complaints from people in Tiburon. He's not being fair. And this comes, this brings up a further question of, that was completely omitted, no, please go back, please go back, that was completely omitted from the, from the response to the roundtable. We understand that communities are being asked to find solutions, but we need to step back and determine how, when solutions are put forward, do you compare solution A to solution B? That was not addressed in the round, in the roundtable response. We need to understand what are the criteria going to be used to, to compare solution A to solution B? One of the ways, one of the criteria might be the least number of people affected, which would be Clark's response of, well, fly it up the bay, and the least number of people on the peninsula are being affected. What criteria is going to be used to evaluate solution A versus solution B? And secondly, when, when, how, how, what is the public process will be used to select the criteria? I'd like to be involved with that. I don't want to go and say, oh, we're just drawing the line across, or we're drawing this line here. We need to find out what criteria is being used for the different solutions, and so we can compare them. we can compare them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Barbara?
So I just wanted to say a couple things. One is that I think trying to have us come up with a plan is kind of a red herring, because we're not engineers, we don't know the criteria, we don't have the research materials, I don't have a computer noise modeling program that will allow me to understand the impact of my recommendations. So, but I also think that asking them to put, to do, to come up with the answers is another red herring. I think, like what Madison said, and a lot of other people in the audience that said, I think what we need to do is come up with requests that are results-based, to say, you decide where you're going to put the planes, but it has to meet these criteria. We want this many noise events, and they can't exceed this many decibels. We can be reasonable, we can negotiate on that issue, but I think we need to let them do their job, which is use their computer modeling and their expertise, and we need to do our job and decide what we can live with. Okay? That's point number one. Point number two, I've just been wondering for a while, and maybe Cliff can answer this, because he's on the round table, maybe not, is why don't SFO and Oakland have separate waypoints? Why doesn't SFO have its series of waypoints that it flies through, and Oakland have its series of waypoints that it flies through? So that there's, that seems to me like it would be a lot safer, and you wouldn't be vectoring planes for safety reasons if you knew this plane was going to be over here, and this plane was going to be over here, and you only had to worry about coordinating San Francisco planes with San Francisco planes and Oakland planes with Oakland planes. Maybe there's a very good reason they don't do that, I don't know, but it makes sense from my perspective. And the final thing I want to say is that if you would ever like me to come to a meeting with my Dust Buster and stand over the heads of people who are trying to speak, running my Dust Buster, I'm willing to do that.
All right, let me just respond real quick to your question, Barbara, about the waypoints and the different airports. You know, they have their own procedures. The night is, there's the night and there's the hush out of Oakland, and they do share the waypoints with those two procedures. Oakland has its own airspace, SFO has its own airspace, San Jose has its own airspace, and it's like turf thing. You can't, I mean, it's, you know, some of these changes, like putting a waypoint out in, you know, further in the bay, you know, folks from the Oakland Airport is, you know, providing issue with that. And so it's, you know, if you wouldn't mind sitting down while I finish, please.
Okay. Well, I wanted to clarify something, because I don't feel like your answer is addressing my question.
Oh, okay. Thank you. You know, there's, there is like this, again, you know, this large bureaucracy. I mean, you would, you would hope that you could just talk in a logical and a rational way with these people, but you can't, you know? And it's frustrating as heck. You know, I mean, I wish it was different. You know, this initiative started months ago, and, you know, we haven't had any meetings with the FAA regarding the initiative, the round table hasn't. You know, they came to the last round table meeting, you know, and did a little dog and pony show and left. They've had multiple meetings with the Select Committee. You know, and that's frustrating. But the Select Committee is nowhere near as having as act together as the round table. And so what we have before us are four items, and that I hope that we're okay with the night, you know, procedures, those two, not flying over the residential areas. From what I'm getting from you folks, like with the Candle, you know, fly the procedure so that it doesn't fly over Brisbane, you know, and that's what it says in the document, regarding the stick during the day. And we're trying to have, not have any stick flights at night, right? But during the day, fly it over the water as long as possible. You know, vectoring is a problem. Vectoring is a problem, the amount of flights that run out of SFO is a problem. Altitude, I know some folks say altitude isn't, you know, a big deal, but, you know, there are times when I look up in the sky and I hardly hear that plane. And there's other times when the plane is like, almost, you know, I can read, you know, all the information and I can see all the rivets. That makes a, you know, that's a worse, in fact, you know, to my quality of enjoyment, you know, than the plane that's higher. And so it does, it does make a difference. And then there's just these other things, like wind. You know, if the wind is blown a certain way, it makes a difference. You know, where I live on Humboldt Road, if the wind's blown a certain way, I can hear a little kid talk to his mom at the community park. And then when it's blown another way, I don't hear anything. But, you know, so again, we do need to come together. You know, and that is just so important. And, you know, there's one thing that has been brought up, and I will take it out, and that's that second waypoint over the Baylands. And now granted, that second waypoint over the Baylands was just to study, right? It didn't say, let's do this. It said, let's study it. But I know that's sensitive to folks, especially out on the ridge. You know, you're directing those planes there. Folks out in Pacifica, they want a waypoint out in the ocean. So then there's going to be that connection from the new stick to that waypoint, right? Yeah, you know, hey, you know what? I'd love to be able to, you know, negotiate that and have it happen. But you know what? If, the likelihood of it happening is nil. It just not, it isn't going to happen. And these are the, you know, the, just some of the things that are in this document, when I was talking with Glenn Martin recently, and some of these other FAA folks, they're scared to death of what's already in there. And that is part of the reason why they haven't come to the table with the round table, because we are, you know, messing with their culture. And I'm just being upfront with you. And you could say, well, Cliff, you know, why don't you just, you know, screw that, just do this, right? And you know what? I don't, when you work with the FAA, you got to take small steps. And, but what we're proposing are much bigger steps than what we've ever done before.
You know, a number of years ago, the Veterans Administration was extremely dysfunctional in the way the money was being distributed, the way department was being held. And you hit a key point, that the FAA has three legs to its department, and they don't talk to each other. So whenever, I suggest, if this isn't happening, you need a representative from Congressman Spear's office every time you talk with the FAA, because in order to change that culture, it's going to really have to come from Congress, I think. But, you know, we can push that and make sure that they always have a congressional representative there, because that's what needs to change, too.
You're absolutely right, Clark. And you know, that, the response that I put in all your boxes, that response would not be what it is without the word from Kathleen Wentworth from Jackie Spear's office. So that meeting that I had with the FAA folks, Kathleen Wentworth's right next to me, right? Whatever I do when I'm dealing with FAA, I always have her there. And the FAA folks respect her. Right? I mean, you know, I'm learning, you know, I know a certain amount, but, you know, I'm not a pilot, not like her. She knows, she knows all, she knows the lingo, she knows what, you know, are issues for air traffic controllers, she knows what are the issues for department heads and managers that are below them. I mean, there's just, just like there's all these different layers of the flights out there, there are all these different layers of the FAA. And so trying to navigate that, and then, you know, taking your responses and trying to, you know, to take your voice and have the FAA listen to it, it's tough. But I'm continuing to do it, and I feel these four things can happen. But again, we got to come together and say, okay, yes, let's do this. So, I mean, are we, with the group that's here right now, I mean, are you okay with either having the waypoint go back to SEPI or potentially having a waypoint where the planes fly over the water longer, so that they're higher by the time they reach land?
Is it short term, long term?
Yeah, we need immediate relief, SEPI, and...
And we need more study.
Oh, you know, absolutely. And then, and then you're right. Then we put this thing in place, but we know that, we'll put it in place, it might take, if it's not working, it could take some time to unwind, right?
Making takes two years to change, and any mistake that gets made, you're studying it for two years. That is the big catch 22.
Yeah. So SEPI is good, right? Try and make that...
Better than SEPI.
Absolutely.
It means you guys stuck.
The FAA has the ability to direct flights where they want them to go. Why doesn't the FAA tell us when they try, why don't they try going to SEPI for a week or two weeks and see what the number of complaints from Brisbane is? They have the opportunity to model straight away and get immediate feedback as to whether it works or not through this app, Stop Jet Noise, which, to be honest, has saved Burt a huge amount of money, because now it just feeds straight in and none of the stuff is typed in. The FAA has the ability to model what's going on and see what happens, see what the effect on the local communities are. And I hope you're bringing things up like that with, when you speak with Glenn Martin now. I really hope you are.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. And, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, like, planes, there's probably quite a few planes that flew where SEPI is today, right? And planes flew beyond SEPI today. I'm just, you know, Peter, you know what?
We don't want conjecture like that.
You know what?
If you can show me where it's going at SEPI, I'm very willing to listen to you, Chris. But I don't want you to sit on a diastate and say they're doing it at the moment without any conjecture. My experience is that it's not happening. You're making conjectures here, which are unfortunately distracting, and you're fully missing the main target.
You know, okay, let me, let me just say, you can look at the flight tracks, right? Flight tracks that are from before Brisbane all the way into San Francisco, and they're turning at different points.
They're all over.
They're all over the place. And some of those turns were where SEPI is, right? I mean, that's obvious. I mean, you know, and so what I'm going to do is I'm going to, you know, I'll tell Burt, okay, you know, and then the last several days, I want you to, you know, all the planes that turned around where the SEPI waypoint is, you know, can you give me some noise monitor information? Now granted, we don't have one at the ridge, I mean, at the ridge right now. But what I can do is I can ask them to go back when the monitor was there, and in the planes that flew around where the SEPI waypoint is, or other waypoints, and give me some information that then I can share with you. I mean, this, you know, by bringing that up, you know, that's given me some, you know, thing in my head, and like, okay, the data's already there.
Yeah. That's a good point. Now, the 2010 report shows when they flew SEPI, there were 35 noise events per day at the ridge. But the windows have been widened at SEPI now, since it was smaller before.
And with their fancy technology, they should be able to fly right through it.
Here's the thing, about 2010, you know, you can, you know, there's, there's vectoring going on, right? If they don't even reach SEPI and don't go to the ridge, well, yeah, okay, those numbers are going to be low. You know, so...
Stop talking about the ridge, because let's just start talking about all the ridge.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If I could just summarize, so we want, A is to get a monitor on the ridge immediately, one Layla's house immediately, right, for real time, and then a short-term solution immediately to cut the noise in Brisbane, and then a long-term, long-term solution to utilize the bay more. Does that summarize it?
That's a lot.
Yes, yeah. And, yeah, and if, you know, in the negotiations with the FAA, if we can have that waypoint potentially moving out to the bay faster, you know, so it isn't so long-term, you know, shorter term, you know, I'm going to shoot for that. But you encapsulated, yeah, what, you know, what we can do moving forward. So I have one more slip, and it is getting late, so Eric, and then, and then we'll wrap it up, so we can all get out of here.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak here, the last moment here. So I live up on the ridge on Quayby Court, and I just want to...
What's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Eric. So I wanted to kind of ask about something that maybe hasn't been brought up before, but I was curious about. So we all talked about, I definitely agree, we should get a monitor up on the ridge. That's something we talk about, you know, making sure that we're covering Brisbane as a whole, we're covering all our citizens. So in order to be doing that, we definitely need to get a monitor on the ridge. And we also possibly need to move the monitor from, you know, the water tower to somewhere where they can measure in central Brisbane, a much better area, right? What's that?
Roof there.
But, so I don't know how many of you guys have flown out of SNA in the past, like Orange County Airport, have any of you guys flown from that airport?
Yeah, that's a grandfather, that's a grandfathered...
It is a grandfather. I'm wondering if that's something, I don't know, for those of you who are not familiar with it, and I'm wondering if it's, I know it's grandfathered, I think it was back in 85 where they grandfathered this rule.
Yeah, the round table's talked about that lots of times, trying to do it, and it's, yeah, it never goes anywhere.
Well, basically what it is, for those who aren't familiar, is that the planes, when they take off from the airport, they're basically taking off at a much higher degree. They're essentially, when they first take off, normally they take off at about 10 to 15 degree. When they take off from SNA, they take off at about 15 to 20 degree.
Isn't that C-TAC, too? I heard that C-TAC is the same.
Possibly. I know SNA's famous for it.
It's like right up, right up there.
I don't know, C-TAC's one of them. I know SNA has done this a lot, and they've done it for quite a while. Like Cliff said, they have grandfathered this for a while before some new rules came out. And essentially what they do is they reach the altitude that they need to at a much higher rate. So if we were to do that over the bay, we'd reach that altitude, whatever, you know, feet we need to reach, at a much faster rate. At that point, what they do is they cut the torque on the engines, and they throttle it back as they fly over land, and then they hit the ocean again. So, and I know, I don't know if there's any way to reopen that issue, but essentially, if we look at our bay, we have two places of water. We have our bay and we have our ocean, right? And essentially, the problem is, is that we have that piece of land in between the two where we have all the noise pollution. So if we were, if there is some way, and we're talking about planes that are mostly flying to Southern California, Vegas, and so on, these aren't the jumbo jets, the 747s, A380s, these are the 737s, the same planes that are flying out of SNA. So to say that we don't have that, they're not capable of doing that, they definitely are. So essentially, what would happen is, and I'm hoping with less than the noise, is that once you're cut back the throttle as you're flying from the bay over to the Pacific Ocean, we can essentially reduce some of the noise that's happening over the peninsula. So essentially, if we followed that path where we fly out over the bay, we reach our altitude sooner, we cut back, the planes cut back the throttle, they fly over the peninsula, they reach the Pacific Ocean, they have another waypoint in the Pacific Ocean which sends them south, we can cut back on some of the noise. And I know that was initially, the FAA is not allowing that anymore, or after, I think, 1985 or whatever.
It's in the document. We are requesting, and Pat brought it up, and so we put it in here.
And talking about, why is there no discussion to open that back up? Is it a safety issue?
No, no, we put it in there.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we are asking for that.
Okay. Because you're saying it was closed, so I'm wondering, I haven't heard anything about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you're, we're talking about following the same procedures that are in place right now, but we're talking about, okay, altitude's not going to make a huge difference. Well, maybe it'll make a bit of a difference. But what about cutting back the throttle on the actual engines? And you talk about, you know, noise, why some planes make less noise once some planes make more noise as they fly over. Well, that's potentially one of the reasons right there, is that, and maybe some airlines are not doing it for that particular reason, to cut noise, but they might have reached the altitude they needed to sooner, and they don't need to use as much throttle, so that's essentially...
And that is one of the requests, when they're flying over the bay to put the pedal down and get... It's in there. You just have, it's in there, Pat. The latest one, that was a suggestion that you made, and we put it in there.
Oh, good.
Okay. Because the only reason I'm either bringing it up, and I know Newport Beach right now is actually pursuing a similar initiative... right now is actually pursuing a similar initiative down there, they're looking to follow that same model that's being done from SNA, because a lot of the flights are flying over Newport Beach. And so even though they're not currently under that same legislation, they're actually looking to change that as well. So there's other cities looking to have airplanes actually follow those same procedures. And what SNA does is, if the procedures aren't followed, they basically assign each airplane a scale from one to three, depending on how much, I don't know what their DBA rating is, how much over they have to go, but if a plane hits a certain level, they get assigned a score. And when, and after a while, they actually find the airlines for exceeding that score. So if, if that's possible in the future, you'd have to change the legislation to allow that to happen, but it has, it is happening in other places, and I know Newport Beach is pursuing this, so this might be something that maybe as a city of Brisbane, we can't convince the FAA to do, but this would actually benefit every single city around the airport, because this isn't talking about shifting the flights from one city to another, this is cutting back on the actual noise of all the flights that are flying over the peninsula. So that might be something as a whole, the roundtable might be able to pursue.
All right. Thank you, Eric. All right, so Tony, I know you had one thing you wanted to say, and brief, and then, yeah, so we can get on out of here.
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:15.
Okay, do I have a second?
I won't take that long.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, I really do appreciate you guys putting us on, on the agenda tonight to discuss this, because a lot of good ideas came up from the city council members, now that I think they've had a chance to digest more of this information. And Councilmember Lou gave me an idea when she talked about how difficult it was for her to sleep, and how that she was having her own personal effects by this noise, but that's at night, she mentioned. But what about the people that have to sleep during the day because they work night jobs? There's a lot of them. And the people who work from home, there's a lot of them. And again, this is a whole Brisbane thing, it's a matter of, if you're anyplace on the ridge of any parts of Brisbane, any of the hills, you're really the ones that get hammered. When we were going around asking people for signatures for the petition, the people that lived down in the bowl tended to be the ones who said, no, it doesn't bother us that much. So I think it, it does matter a whole lot where you live. The other thing is that Madison Davis, Councilmember Madison, you also brought up a really important point when you said, well, how do we know, and why do we have to tell them? Well, maybe, I think the city, the city attorney would tell you that if you were going to sue anybody, you'd have to hire some experts at some point. And maybe that's what the city should do, is not sue anybody, but think about hiring its own sound consultant who could then provide those answers, because the people who are working for the airport aren't our friends. Burt's a great guy, but he's not our friend.
No.
And he's being paid by the airport to do the airport's bidding. The really nice gentleman, exactly, the really nice gentleman that works for United Airlines that we met at the roundtable, he's not our friend. And he's not out to hurt us, but he's out to do the bidding of United Airlines. And the lady who, the other lady who's the consultant for the roundtable, she's not our friend. She's getting paid to advise the roundtable, but again, I didn't see anything from her that made me feel like she was really looking out for us. The final thing is that in terms of the FAA, dealing with the FAA, you said it's, I don't want to put words in your mouth, because you said it was like three parts of it, that made me think of a three-headed snake, and, whereas...
I called him a three-headed beast.
Clark, well, that's good.
They weren't happy with it.
Then we're on the same page, because Clark said a three-footed stool or something, but I think it's more like, you said, a more of a beast. And, and the issue is, they are not accountable, there is no penalty for them when they fail, there's no penalty for the airport when it fails, there's no penalty for the air traffic controllers when they fail, as long as they're not crashing planes. And, and that's really the crux of the matter, because when you, I read all of those reports, and, and, and this is one of the reasons I came to Cliff's defense, because he's put in so many hours, read this stuff probably till his eyes are bleeding, those reports from the, from San Francisco International Airport, they say, Cliff, you don't have a problem. That's what they say. They say, end of the conclusion, you don't have a problem, because you're seeing now the community noise level is so high already that when our planes come over, they don't really bother you very much, and it's just a matter of your imagination that they do. Part of that, I think, is because they're measuring average, and you don't have average ears, none of us do. We're all individuals, and every plane that comes over is an individual plane, it's not making average noise, it's making this plane's noise right now. So those are the things I want, want to throw in at the end here, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'd like to say my last comment.
All right.
Okay, sorry, I'll make it brief, because I know we're short on time. But I think that's really important to, for us to really listen to the points that Tony just made, because on one hand, we're, we're saying that, hey, they are our friends, they have all the control, but on the other hand, we're saying, well, we want them to meet our demands, and we want them to meet our demands now. So we really need to take that into consideration with the approach that we're taking. I'm in sales, I do negotiating, it just is part of my job, I don't negotiate deals like this, but I do know that you get farther with honey, right? And so when I have a client that comes to me, and I have a lot of the control in the situation, so if a client comes to me and says, well, I want this for 50% off, or 30% off, make it happen, or we don't have a deal, I'm like, well, we don't have a deal, I can't do that. And so I'd hate for us to be in that position where we come and we say, fly all of the planes over the Golden Gate, and that's, that's our plan, when Cliff is telling us that that is not realistic in their eyes. So we have to understand who we're dealing with, they have all of the control. So we may not have a perfect solution, but we need to come up with a solution at least that we think is pretty good, but we also think that they're going to accept, because we don't want to waste our opportunity. Also having it be results-based is super important, so that we can hold them accountable. So I think that that's something that, you know, definitely needs to be taken into consideration if it's not already, and say, hey, this is what we think, and let's test it out, and we need you to be open to changing that if it's not meeting the results that we have. But I just, I'd hate for there to be frustration and say, well, what we, our ideal situation is for you to fly through the Golden Gate, and you know what, council members, that didn't happen, you didn't make what we want happen, and so we're really frustrated and we're unhappy with the job that you've done. So we just want everyone to be realistic about who we're dealing with, I mean, this is a monster, right? It's the FAA, and they're not our friends. And so we need to kind of work together to come up with a solution that we think is acceptable, but I just don't want the, it's great to have standards, you've said that, Pat, you know, you want to shoot high, but in this case, you also want a, a deal that they're going to want to work with us on, and not just say, poo poo to you, and you get nothing. So I just want to, to take into consideration what Tony said, and really think about it, you know, like that. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Madison. All right.
Right, right?
All right, so...
Many, many government organizations, I think we can say that about, right?
All right, so we're trying to get out of here, Barbara. And this will be the last one, so then we can just finish, okay?
So, I realized, although I meant what I said, I don't think I gave the emphasis that I meant to, because when I said it's a brand herring, I don't mean that we shouldn't have planes fly over the water, I don't mean that we shouldn't try for higher elevations, I don't mean that, I don't think we should do all of these things that the council and the community have proposed. They're all great ideas, but I think the real answer is going to, in order to get us where we need, want to be, we're going to need to use all five, six, 10 strategies, and that without, and that without having actual goals, written goals of where we want to end up, they're not going to get us there. So I, I wanted to kind of change the emphasis of what I said, not that I was wrong, but that I think I emphasized the wrong point. And I would still like to understand, because you said they have their own airspace, right? But then why are Oakland planes causing San Francisco planes to vector if they have their own airspace? I still don't know.
They don't follow it.
Because they don't follow it.
They don't follow, yeah, they vector.
That's what they want to do. Okay. Save some money.
Yeah, and then, you know, later on down the line, both those procedures go to the port waypoint, which is, you know, down the coast.
Yeah, because they say, they say San Francisco's being vectored because Oakland's too close, right? But if they have their own airspace, why are they too close?
Because they're not, they're not penalized, like, no one's holding them accountable, and it's just in TRACON, and they're like, well, let's cut it short so we can save money on fuel, which cuts everything else short, and so they're avoiding each other's airspace, so that's kind of like the whole conundrum that we're dealing with, it's all tangled.
That's why, I agree, and that's why I think we need to have results, standards for our results. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, so also under Mayor Council Matters, we had some, we had Communications and, I didn't see any, so we're good there. Discuss cities' position on the League of California Cities Resolution Packet. Is it, is this a quick one, Clay?
It's as quick as you want to make it.
Okay.
It's, it's, the packet's been provided to you, normally the mayor's authorized to represent the city in voting.
Yes.
Unless there's something you want to talk about.
All right, thank you.
Both of us are going?
Yeah, both of us are going.
Well, both of you are going.
Mm-hmm. Confirm proposed city council's schedule for 2016. So I know we, we did have some Baylands meetings scheduled, I guess this is still Bayland, so, no, it was regular?
It's both.
Both, okay.
And then just the...
For the rest of the year, okay.
These are all the meetings?
Yeah, so October 20th, you would have the discussion about SB 415, which is the election issue, pushing out the election, or however you're going to go about that.
Okay.
And then December 8th, we would move the December 1st meeting to December 8th, and that's your, would be your reorganization meeting.
Yes.
And then, and then you as the, as the current mayor would officiate over the Festival of Lights.
Oh, so that happens. Okay, so that's why we're changing it to...
That's historically how we've handled that, so I think the first Sunday of December is the Festival of Lights, so you would still be mayor, and then a new mayor would come in the 8th.
This is a 20 then, okay.
The only other issue there, and I don't think it's a big issue this year, is the, sometimes you want to meet ahead of time to have your conversation about the reorganization. We could do that on the 8th, or maybe even do that on the 17th, maybe a half hour before the 17th's meeting.
Okay, so you're talking about council subcommittees and...
No, 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 just, just your discussion about your reorganization.
Got it, got it, okay. So, so what are you recommending then?
Um, we could do that on the 17th, just to make sure that everything's...
November 17th?
That's what I do, I get in advance.
We'll do it like at 7 o'clock.
Okay, 7.
Okay, just to reiterate one more time, so I'm super clear, these are all of the rest of the meetings we're having, nothing, these aren't just added meetings to what we already have, this is just, this is the whole schedule.